I give them to you. Call meeting in order. Shelley, can you do a roll call, please?
Mr. Mayor. District 1, Councilman Rios.
Here.
District 3, Councilman Latham.
Here.
Vice Mayor Stagelton.
Here.
District 5, Councilwoman Giles.
Present.
District 6, Councilman Shipley.
Here.
Mayor Camaro.
Here.
We have a call from Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Shelley. I want to invite Chief Robinson up for the invocation, please.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful at this time to be gathered together as citizens and representatives of this community. We're grateful for those who serve daily to make this a safe and good place to live. We would ask that thy blessings be with this body as they deliberate this evening, that they'll be able to make those decisions that will have a positive impact to our community. Please watch over and protect those who are in the field, the police officers and firefighters who serve to keep the citizens safe here. And please bless each of us as we go through this evening and return home, that we'll do so in safety. And we pray for these things in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Want to invite one of the explorers up to leave us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Go to the summary of current events, and we'll start with Fernando.
I'd like to thank Chief Walters, he took us on a tour of a lot of work that they've done at the jail, and it's been revamped. It looks like a different place, just really good job, and I'm glad everybody that's pitched in to make it happen. There's still more work to do, some looking forward to seeing Phase 2. I also would like to do a shout out for Copper Valley Youth Club. They're doing the Old Dominion 5K Run for Youth this Saturday, and so all the proceeds go to benefit the youth club. So if you can make it out there, starts at 7:00 a.m. at Old Dominion Park, so thank you.
Freddie?
Thank you, Mayor. Also want to thank Chief Walters for extending the open house at the PD station. Really has transformed not only the building, but the character of the police department. And a special thank you for your efforts that you and your staff have made to implement the Explorer Program. We got some fine young men here, I talked to them earlier, and I said, you know, one good thing about this is in 20 years from now, you can say, "I started that." So take your pictures now and hang on to them, they're going to be valuable. You can prove to your kids that you actually did this. So nice job to the entire police department. Couple of things of items of interest, the Center for the Arts on the 14th of September, 11:00 a.m. The Copper Country Quilters will be presenting a one-woman quilt show for the month. So if you get a chance, stop by and look at some of those fine quilts. And I believe they're all constructed by Sally Hatfield, sorry. The Old Dominion Days are coming up on September 11th. Again, I'm going to promote the Center for the Arts. At 5:00 p.m. on September 11th, there will be an opening for the Old Dominion photo displays. So there's going to be a lot of events going on the Old Dominion Days, and hopefully everybody can make it out. It's a four-day event, so there's going to be a lot going on. But again, if you get a chance, on the 11th at 5:00 p.m. at the center. Also, I attended a Freeport McMoRan, gosh, I forgot the actual name of the gathering, but...
Partnership.
The Partnership, there you go, thank you. And, you know, it's really a good event to have Freeport extend themselves and let the public know where they are, where the industry is, the copper industry and things like that. And not only that, they opened the floor to anybody else that's there that wants to share any information about what's going on in your community. But the one thing that I was glad to hear is that in the copper industry today, they're very optimistic. It's all about supply and demand, and right now, there's more demand than supply, which is good for copper, right? Or at least the copper industry. So in short, the copper industry is in good
Call meeting in order. Shelley, can you do a roll call, please?
Mr. Mayor. District one, Councilman Rios.
Here.
District three, Councilman Latham.
Here.
Vice Mayor Stagelton.
Here.
District five, Councilwoman Giles.
Present.
District six, Councilman Shipley.
Here.
Mayor Camaro's.
Here.
We have a core of Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Shelley. I want to invite Chief Robinson up for the invocation, please.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful at this time to be gathered together as citizens and representatives of this community. We're grateful for those who serve daily to make this a safe and good place to live. We would ask that thy blessings be with this body as they deliberate this evening, that they'll be able to make those decisions that will have a positive impact to our community. Please watch over and protect those who are in the field, the police officers and firefighters who serve to keep the citizens safe here. And please bless each of us as we go through this evening and return home, that we'll do so in safety. And we pray for these things in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Want to invite one of the explorers up to leave us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Go to the summary of current events, and we'll start with Fernando.
I'd like to thank Chief Walters. He took us on a tour of a lot of work that they've done at the jail, and it's been revamped. It looks like a different place. Just really good job, and I'm glad everybody that's pitched in to make it happen. There's still more work to do, so I'm looking forward to seeing Phase Two. I also would like to do a shout out for Cobra Valley Youth Club. They're doing the Old Dominion 5K Run for Youth this Saturday, and so all the proceeds go to benefit the youth club. So if you can make it out there, it starts at 7:00 AM at Old Dominion Park. So, thank you.
Freddie?
Thank you, Mayor. Also want to thank Chief Walters for extending the open house at the PD station. Really has transformed not only the building, but the character of the Police Department. And a special thank you for your efforts that you and your staff have made to implement the Explorer program. We've got some fine young men here. I talked to them earlier, and I said, you know, one good thing about this is in 20 years from now, you can say, "I started that." So take your pictures now and hang on to them. They're going to be valuable. You can prove to your kids that you actually did this. So nice job to the entire Police Department. Couple of things of items of interest. The Center for the Arts, on the 14th of September, 11:00 AM, the Copper Country Quilters will be presenting a one-woman quilt show for the month. So if you get a chance, stop by and look at some of those fine quilts. And I believe they're all constructed by Sally Hatfield. Sorry. The Old Dominion Days are coming up on September 11th. Again, I'm going to promote the Center for the Arts. At 5:00 PM on September 11th, there will be an opening for the Old Dominion photo displays. So there's going to be a lot of events going on the Old Dominion Days, and hopefully everybody can make it out. It's a four-day event, so there's going to be a lot going on. But again, if you get a chance on the 11th at 5:00 PM at the Center. Also, I attended a Freeport McMoRan. Gosh, I forgot the actual name of the gathering, but...
Partnership.
The Partnership, there you go. Thank you. And, you know, it's really a good event to have Freeport extend themselves and let the public know where they are, where the industry is, the copper industry and things like that. And not only that, they opened the floor to anybody else that's there that wants to share any information about what's going on in your community. But the one thing that I was glad to hear is that in the copper industry today, they're very optimistic. It's all about supply and demand, and right now, there's more demand than supply, which is good for copper, right? Or at least the copper industry. So in short, the copper industry is in good, solid ground right now. So glad to hear that, especially for all of us in this community that, you know, the copper mines employ so many of us, or so many of our citizens. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Freddie. Shirley?
We need to round up all the chihuahuas that are in this town, all the four-legged chihuahuas. And we need them to come to the Miami Festival for the Chihuahua Races on September 28th. It's always a ton of fun. And Jerry Barnes, our...yeah, he runs the Chihuahua Races. He and his wife Marcia does. Jerry's our city engineer. And you guys volunteer to do that. Spend the whole day there. It's great. It's a great event, and it's a lot of fun, too. Then I would like to talk about Ellen's retirement party. So Ellen Kretsch, our Chamber Director, she retired, and a job well done, and thank her. And we really want to wish the new Director, Tiana, good luck, because she's got a lot of energy, enthusiasm, and new ideas. And I think that's great. I'm anxious to see how well she does. So Old Dominion Days, the biscuit and gravy breakfasts are not to be missed tomorrow morning and Friday morning at 8:00 at the Hila Historical Museum. $10. It's a great deal. It's a great cause. The Dillon Urban Foundation, another great cause. So they're way behind in bicycle and helmet donations. So this community knows how to do great things. We need 150 bicycles. We need 150 bicycles and helmets in two weeks. So put it out there. Whoever can donate a bike, and they need them of all sizes, toddler bikes, tricycles, teenager bikes, whatever. If you can donate a helmet, that's great. If you can't, it's okay, too. We need the bicycles. So you can take them right over to Highway 60 Motors anytime, anytime that they're open, and they really would like them before the 28th, so they can get everything organized. But if you show up on the 28th, nobody will turn your bicycle down. So let's see what we can do. And then the library is getting all-new flooring and several additional computers. That's a really needed thing in our community. At the library meeting the other day, I was astounded to hear that we had almost 50,000 people come through the doors at the library in the last calendar year. 50,000, it was 49,800 and something. That's an incredible amount of people. And the items that were borrowed was, was it Adria, 24,000, 26,000 items? 26,000 items. If you don't go to the library, you don't realize how utilized it really is. And those folks do great things over there. So we're glad that everybody can pull together and get those improvements done. And then lastly, I want to invite our Police Chief up here, because I want him to introduce these fine young people that are new explorers. This community fundraised. We fundraised, and we have some folks here in the audience that helped with yard sales, whatever, whatever we could do. So he's going to introduce these young people that are our Police Department's future.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A couple of things I want to cover, if you don't mind, real quick. Tonight is my one-year anniversary, and as promised, I want to introduce you to the Globe Explorer Post 2017. So posts, please stand up. So this post, first four original members are as follows. Dayton Dewey, step forward. Nicholas Lotus, step forward. Angel Montoya. And then Logan Walters. These gentlemen are displaying their Class A uniform. The post is open not just to Globe residents, but to the greater Cobra Valley area from kids 12 to 18 years of age. We'll be putting some stuff out on Facebook here shortly, but you'll start seeing those uniforms, or uniforms similar to those, at all the special events. So a big round of applause for the first four of Post 2017.
We are proud of you people. We are so proud of you young people.
And we are a post that is in need of fundraising, so we will take pictures with the general public for a small donation. While I'm up here, there's a couple of new police officers I'd like to introduce to you. Jamie Schnepp was here a minute ago. She got a call. She's working already, so that's good. She's a new police officer that just graduated from the Yuma College Police Academy. And then Jeff Overton is here. Jeff comes to us with 14 years of experience. He brings a lot of talent with him. He's a phlebotomist, DRE. He's very versed and experienced, and he's been a pleasure and learning quickly. His only disability right now is just geography, because Globe is different. So he's learning that quickly. Both him and Jamie will be sworn in at a later date, another meeting that we'll have, a council meeting. And the last thing I would like to say is, thank you for all the kind words and the support of this council for that remodel. It's really been a struggle the last year with all the changes. I'm not sure if the police officers have seen anything, but their new boss is kind of high-speed, low-drag, and I like to get stuff done, and they've been working hard. And if it wasn't for the men and women of the Globe Police Department, we wouldn't have got there. But same thing goes with the other aspects of the Globe family. John Angula and Jerry have been absolutely phenomenal. Jeannie has actually stopped throwing stuff at us. Financial thing. So the entire departments across the spectrum, all the directors, all their helpers, all their worker bees have pulled together. But the one person I really want to say thank you to over the last two months, I sent him to a really cool 10-week school. He learned how to be a project manager, and he's been rocking it. Commander Castaneda has done a phenomenal job over the last, and the community itself. So thank you. So after my year-end report, y'all didn't fire me, so I figured we'll do another year, and we've got a lot more stuff to cover this next year. So thank you again for all the support from the City Council and the other city departments. And you, too, Jerry.
He wasn't talking about his anniversary with his wife, Suzie, right there. That wasn't one year. That's how many years?
30.
30. Yeah, he's talking about his one-year anniversary with the city.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, you know, if we think back a year ago, the hope that we had for the change that we needed and vested in Dale, and Chief Walters, and he has more than delivered. I go through a litany of things, but I think his ability to demonstrate leadership and change an organizational culture, as he did, and in such a timeframe, is just unbelievable. And so I think we owe him a debt. So anyways, Dale, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Jesse?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to Chief Walters and all the great work you're doing over there, and welcome aboard, new officers, and you guys over there. You guys are awesome, all right? Other than that, the Chamber is holding a meet and greet for our new Chamber Director, Tiana Holder, at the liquor stables this Friday at 6:00, if you'd like to go out. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Mike?
I just have a few things. First of all, and most importantly, I was actually able to lead Mike Humphrey's procession with Captain Brockamonte from the Fire Department. And what an emotional ride. They had 200 to 300 bikes out there, and we started out at, oh, I showed up about 11:00. And then we rode from, well, I didn't ride. I drove with Joe. But we went from the casino all the way through town and out to Bullion Plaza. And what a sight it was. I'm sure Mike was just like kicking it, so I really appreciate everybody's support for that. And then I also want to thank Fire and PD, too. Commander Castaneda, all your officers did phenomenal on leading that procession, so make sure you thank them as well. And then just a reminder, a few reminders, the fair is actually coming up already, starting the 19th through the 22nd. It's Thursday through Sunday. So if you get a chance to go out there, I know the rodeo is a real, real big deal to go watch. And then, of course, the Dillon Urban Foundation, the 28th, right, guys? From 1:30 to 6:30 at Miami High School. So definitely make it out to that. And like Shirley said, if you can donate bikes, cash, whatever, make sure you get it over there to those guys. So thanks, Donna and Angela. Appreciate it. And then a reminder, I got stuck yesterday in the road closures. A dot, the bridge, wasn't that bad, but I left town at, I think, around 9:00 or so, and it took an extra 20 minutes or so. So I'm sure it's going to get worse, right, Steve? He would know. So just be patient. And then another, one other thing, the Copper Ball, I'm not sure where it is. Linda, do you know?
Center for the Arts?
This Saturday night, right? I know they haven't sold many tickets to that yet.
Everybody waits till the last minute.
Till the last minute? Okay. So if you're interested, you want to dress up, 5:00? Okay. So if you can make that, definitely do that. And then, like everybody else, Chief Walters, thank you for the tour, and thank you for your service and the phenomenal job that you're doing over there. Couldn't do it without you, that's for sure. So thank you for bringing all your knowledge and expertise and love for the City of Globe. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mike. Have a couple of things, just to say a little more, and it was honored to be there at Mike Humphrey's funeral. A lot of people in attendance there. It was a great honor to him after serving 37 years with the city and seven years on City Council. So that was a great event. It really was. I also want to thank John Angula and his crew for the signs that were put up. They were expedited pretty quickly. That was the signs for flash flood in memory of Kathy Cognes. Went out and saw them, took some pictures of them, and they really came out good. I know the county put theirs out with their county insignia. The city has them out in their washes with the city insignia, so those look great. On Monday, 16th, is Andy Hall Day. We're going to read a proclamation tonight, but we'll be presenting that proclamation on Monday. I think it's at 10:00 at the cemetery. His family members have made a lot of preparation for this event, and I think they've located the site of where he's buried, and that's where they're going to do the presentation at. And again, yeah, thank you, Chief Walters, on your one-year anniversary. The place looks amazing. I know what it used to look like. It was a big rat hole, and it really looks nice. So that's all I have. Paul?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I wanted to start, just a couple of quick things. Linda had announcement on an event for CCYS going on, so...
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This Saturday is going to be the first home game for the Copper City Youth Sports Tackle Football Team, The Punchers. This has been an amazing organization. It's, I think this is year four, and we have over 150 youth from kinder to sixth grade participating, and that's through the tackle football program. And this year, brand new, is the cheer program. And the reason why I wanted to bring this up is, we, traveling as part of this group, we go to other rural communities in Arizona, Winslow, Payson, Sholo, Pintop. This past Saturday, we were in Eager, where the kids were able to play in the Dome, which was a huge deal for them, to play in the Dome. And in fact, in a couple of weeks, we have what we call Dome Days, and it's an all-day football tournament. It's really cool. But when we travel, there's 100 players, plus the cheerleaders, so there's about 150 kids, and then their families. So there's over 300 people that are traveling into these small towns, and we usually make weekends out of them. We stay overnight, we stay two nights, we eat in restaurants, we, you know, really experience the town. And I think it's a really amazing experience for our youth, but it's great to have this group, these other teams, come into our community, because this really is an economic development tool that we can use. And so what we're doing with our teams this year is, we're giving them welcome bags and with some discount coupons to send them to different restaurants that they can try, because there's a 10:00 game, which is our fifth and sixth graders. There's a game at noon, which is our third and fourth graders. And then we have our Mighty Mites that play at 2:00, and that's our kinder to second. And I think our kinder to second are undefeated. They are, they're killing it this year. And I think that Anthony is your little guy in Mighty Mites? So, and they're just so much fun to watch. So I really would, you know, like to invite everyone to come out and see a game or part of a game. And I think the girls are cheering during the first game, which includes a halftime routine, and they are amazing. So I think it's a great organization that we have in our community, and I love seeing what it brings to the town. So thank you.
Linda, it's at the football field?
Yes, oh, yes. Harrison Field. Yes. 10:00, noon, and 2:00.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, also that Michelle had reminded me that the sense that I think the city, the group of the Complete Count is doing a booth at the County Fair, and I think that's a good way to get that message out. I haven't signed up yet, but I intend to sign up to pull a couple stints there. Love talking to people about census, and I think that starts that message that everyone should count. This is tax dollars that are going to be returned to us, and we need to get our fair share. So that's part of that process. So if you're at the county fair, stop by the booth and learn more about it. And then lastly, I don't know if you've noticed, that Danny has put a couple new additions in the meeting. He's got a camera out there on a little tripod, so he can do some zooming and some different special effects and things like that. And then the roving calendar events while we're here, and there's no presentation up there, he put those all together. That was his idea. And I'll tell you, he's got some pretty good ideas, and a lot of time, the price tag's not too bad. So, you know, we're okay to say yes to that, but always try and expand our transparency in getting our word out. And so thanks to him on that. Mr. Mayor, members of council, that's all I have for you.
Thank you, Paul. Just to add to the census, if anybody is willing to volunteer at the table with us to man that, we need some help. Over the weekend, it's four days. You can get ahold of Michelle or myself, and we'll get you on the schedule for that.
Mr. Mayor, can I add one more thing?
Yes.
20 years ago today, this community welcomed me and my family, and I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. I've never felt like I had a bigger family or more friends since we've been here, and I'm honored to tell people that I'm from Globe. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing. And this is La Casita Downtown Globe LLC Liquor License Number 07040022, filing agent, Adrian Rose Villalobos, located at 472 North Broad Street, Globe. So we open it for any comments or to the public.
Mr. Mayor, I don't see anyone heading for the microphone to comment on this public hearing. So anybody that would like to speak is welcome, just to walk up without having to fill out any paperwork, but seeing none.
So we'll go ahead and close this public hearing.
Is there a sign-in sheet?
Yes, and make sure, if there's a sign-in sheet going around for the public hearing, that we get signed in also for this liquor license.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll close the public hearing. We'll go to the community call to the public. Again, this is a time anybody want to make any comments, they can fill out a request speak card at the back of the building here, limited to three minutes. And this is also a time, if you want to speak on an agenda item later on in the meeting, you can fill out a speak card also to speak later on. And I have none. You have any, Shelley, for call to the public? Okay, so we'll go to special presentations and ceremonial matters. And first, we have recognition of representatives of the Iglesia Negrito for sponsorship for the Aid to Humanity Event held in San Carlos, and expressions of appreciation by the City of Globe on the generous donations presented to the City of Globe by the Iglesia Negrito, and declaration of intended use.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we had hoped to, this meeting, get some of the key representatives from the Church of Christ here. In talking to Rowley, our local contact, he said they were not able to, in transportation from the Philippines, make it here in time. And so I would recommend that maybe council could give direction in this, that, direction from council to the mayor to write a formal thank you letter on behalf of the council to each of the three representatives and to Rowley himself. Rowley's the guy on the ground in Globe, and he's been working with me. We've been working a lot on this. And we want to say thank you to them and to their church and to their generosity, to the City of Globe and to the region, San Carlos. And I don't know when we can get them scheduled again, but I think the least we can do, if it's council's pleasure, is to put together a letter of thank you to them, and we can draft something up, and the mayor, you can sign on behalf of the full council, if you get council direction at this point. get council direction at this point.
Mr. Mayor?
Freddie. I fully support that we do write a thank you letter.
Second.
And, Mr. Mayor, the only other addition is, I think we've talked about this, and the graciousness of their donations. I think we, everyone agrees that we should, those donations should go back into the community. They're donations to the city, to fire and police, and there are different, various ways that each of those organizations can serve the community. And so, I think the, in the spirit of helping others, that we need to find ways to reinvest those funds to help our community. And so, we'll be coming back with some ideas. This is not the time and the place, but I just wanted to say publicly that that money will not just be used to replace general fund budget items that have already been budgeted. This is for above the fold, additional items, additional benefits we can bring to the community through the fire department, through the police department, and through city hall. And I'd like to, with council's direction, I'd like to bring back some of the ways that we're going to expend those funds, so that we're transparent, and that the church can know how we put those to good use. And so, with that, if council is on board with those two things, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, just information, just a reminder, they gave five thousand dollars to the police department, they gave five thousand dollars to the fire department, they gave five thousand dollars to the Alderman House, and they gave five thousand dollars to the City of Globe. And that, you know, I believe that police and fire should use it, their community servants and whatever they need, their needs are. But I think for city council, if I can recommend and get direction, give that back to the Globe Miami community. I mean, we have the ACE program that feeds the kids in our community that don't have food on the weekends. There's other programs that we can look at and try and distribute that out through Globe Miami, so that we all benefit. It was an Aid to Humanity event, so I think that would be beneficial to our community if we're good with that.
I agree.
I agree.
So, Mr. Mayor, with that agreement by council, we will prepare those letters and bring back an item to talk about how best to utilize those funds from the Church of Christ. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have item B, proclamation proclaiming September sixteen, two thousand nineteen, Andy Hall Day in Globe, Arizona, and I'll read the proclamation. Andy Hall Day, whereas Andrew Andy Hall served as a member of the eighteen sixty-nine John Wesley Powell Expedition mapping and exploring the Colorado River a hundred and fifty years ago, and subsequently lived the remainder of his life in the Arizona Territory. Whereas Andy Hall, well-known to the citizens of Globe during his life in the Arizona Territory, is a historical figure in Arizona who represents the early pioneer age of the state. Whereas Andy Hall served as deputy to prominent lawman Sheriff Pete Gabriel, and served a constable of Florence, Arizona Territory. Whereas Andy Hall served as a shotgun messenger for Wells Fargo, and while guarding a mail backboard, buckboard, carrying a Wells Fargo Express box containing a five thousand dollar payroll for the Mack Morris Mine, became the first Wells Fargo messenger killed in the line of duty in the Arizona Territory on August twentieth, eighteen eighty-two. Whereas Andy Hall is buried in the Old Globe Cemetery in Globe, Arizona, he will be memorialized with a dedication of the newly installed memorial marker in his honor on September sixteen, two thousand nineteen. Now, therefore, I Al Gameros, Mayor of City of Globe, do hereby proclaim September sixteen, two thousand nineteen, will be Andy Hall Day, with events remembering and educating the public about the history and Andy Hall's life in Globe, Arizona. And this will be read Monday and presented to, is it his daughter Rebecca, or is it his, one of his family members? I can't remember.
Yeah, I think it's a...
Niece.
Niece, maybe, maybe it's a niece, yeah. So, we'll be presenting that to the family on the sixteenth.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next, we have a proclamation proclaiming September two thousand nineteen as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Globe, Arizona. And I'll read that proclamation. Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, September two thousand nineteen. Whereas cancer is the number-one disease killing children today, and whereas every year, more than twelve thousand five hundred children and young adults are diagnosed with cancer. And whereas childhood cancer spares no one, affecting children from every socioeconomic background. And whereas our children are our most precious resource, and Globe is fortunate to have many citizens, businesses, and organizations committed not only to raising funds to assist with financial support, but also by providing the community support that is vital to helping families cope with the difficulties and emotional struggles of children that are afflicted with cancer. And whereas by putting faces to childhood cancer, it will encourage us to get involved and be a voice, or write letters to our state representatives about our concerns of the federal government cutting funds last year for the research of childhood cancer. And whereas by increasing awareness in our community, we join our communities across the nation in the fight to find a cure and to help save the precious lives of the smallest warriors. Now, therefore, I Al Gameros, Mayor of City of Globe, Arizona, hereby proclaim the month of September, two thousand nineteen, as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And I wanna present this to Donald and Angela Urban, and if, John or Angela, if you can give us, just give us a little information, you guys are, I know you're having a fundraiser this weekend, and then your event is on the twenty-eighth.
Pull that microphone close and let her read.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We started the Dillon Foundation back in two thousand ten after we lost Dillon. We wanted to help families that have to deal with what we went through, and also kinda give back for all the help we were given. So, it's been very successful. In the last four years, we've given out around twenty-five thousand per year in assistance to families in Globe Miami and the San Carlos area. We're all volunteers, there's no payroll, nobody takes any money out of it, we all just devote our time to that. Our event's coming up, September twenty-eighth, we wanna invite everybody out, of course. It's gonna be a good time, bring all the kids out, we're gonna have big inflatable castles, trains, a lot of fun stuff for the kids, superheroes, stuff like that. And one of our teams that's raising money, we're doing things a little different this year, teams are actually raising money, and we're honoring everyone, not just Dillon, you know, even anybody that's lost their fight, or that's still fighting or survived cancer, we're kinda going more towards that, since we don't have the other event to honor them. So, we're gonna be doing more of that, and teams are fundraising, we got a team doing a car wash and fry bread sale this Saturday at Sixty Motors from seven till noon. So, if you wanna come out and get your car washed, or get some fry breads, that's gonna be a great, great fundraiser. Like I said, we hope to see everybody out, and thank you for the proclamation.
Item D, council will hear a presentation on possible volunteer opportunities for residents with various City of Globe departments. Paul?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think it was actually before we wrapped up the budget, we'd had some discussion about how volunteering for the city and how people can volunteer, and what that takes, and some of the ways that different departments utilize volunteers. And so, this is a bring back from that request, and so, just going to jump in here. Make sure my, pointing this in the right direction. Let's see here. All right, one of you is, we trapped my PowerPoint. And so, I'm just gonna say next when Shelley can hit it. Okay, so, next. So, the purpose of this presentation, describe various levels in which residents can volunteer with the City of Globe. Describe opportunities for residents to volunteer in various departments, so I'll get specific on that. Describe limitations in volunteering in various departments, and like I say, this was requested by council. So, next, so, all right. The levels of volunteerism, and, and Shelley, we got the wrong PowerPoint. Yeah, is that the one we had added?
We took out one.
No, we added in. So, all right, so let me pull the one from my packet. Is the other one saved, or we made those changes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You said put final on it, and I didn't.
Yeah, so we're switching one out. We had updated this a little bit, and so, I apologize for the change, but let's see if, do you have it available, or you want me to just go with the other one? And I can...
No.
Okay, so I'm gonna find my copy of the original one and go with that. Actually, I can just read off of there, it's a nice big letters. So, just go ahead and put it back up. Okay, I'm sorry.
You want this?
No, no, it's, I can read it. It's such big print, even I can read it.
You have digital.
No, that's all right. That's fine, if you had it handy. Okay, so, I may ad lib a little bit in this, but it won't be much. So, go, second one, levels of volunteerism. So, what we added, so, you can volunteer by serving on a city board or commission and giving advice to council. You can also participate in special projects or work efforts organized by the city or on behalf of the city, and we do that where we get together and get a group together, go out and volunteer. The third way is, you can submit to the city information, any hazards, any blight efforts, any things that you, potholes you be aware of, and that's a form of volunteerism to let us know that there are dangers out there. And then, serving as a volunteer employee for the city. I think that's the biggest one, and that's the one that adds the most benefit. So, go ahead, next. Okay, so, volunteer workers, we have many of them. So, departments may, from time to time, post volunteer openings, and the library is the one that utilizes the most. PD is looking for it. Potential applications, potential applicants may apply. If the applicant are selected, they must pass a background check and meet physical requirements for the position. Volunteers will be assigned a supervisor and given work assignments based on the city needs. Volunteers are subject to the, they're non-paid, and they're subject to the policies and requirements of a paid worker, but no compensation. Departments can, cannot dictate volunteer hours. We can, they're like a regular employee, but we don't pay them, and if they don't show up, you know, we understand they're volunteers. So, but most enthusiastic can we work out those work schedules. And then, volunteers may be dismissed without cause, there's no, what they call property right to the position. When you're a paid employee, you have a right to that job. With this, it's, sometimes we need them, sometimes you don't, and so, that's what we have with workers. You wanna hit? The police department, and so now going into, generally into the departments, and I'm gonna go through the department responses, we put together, I asked for the departments to share information, and if, at the end, you have any questions about any of the departments, the department directors are here to respond, if so, you would so like to. So, police department, and Chief Walters intends to build a strong volunteer group to support Globe PD, that's one of his things he's been looking to do, and we're working towards that. He's got a lot of, you know, things, he's, ovens and irons in the fire, but this is coming up. With PD, they volunteers must pass a heightened background screen, it's even more intense. But he knows a strong police force, has a good volunteer corps, and gets extra things done. Motor assistance is one of the things that we're looking at managing and working special events, both in property management and record management, which are civilian activities. And then, there's a series of added specialty volunteers that he can use, and those will kinda depend on, if you find somebody like, that has twenty years' experience of doing something, and he can put them to work, he can use them as a volunteer. So, next. So, then we have the, we have the Globe Library, where in the fall, in fall, winter, spring, you have a lot of different volunteers. You have shelving, you have cleaning and taking care of the facilities. You have library special events, work is setting up the event, working the event, taking it down, and front desk, which is very technology-based. You need to be a problem solver, you need to deal with people, and you need to make sure that you keep track of the assets. In the summer, setup take-down, again, on special events, working with the kids, we have a lot more kids in there, they're off, and so, they're gotta be somewhere. And so, taking photos, craft prep, craft-making, serving meals, serving snacks, and again, the front desk activities, we always need help at the front desk. Volunteer limitations, volunteer must, application paperwork, they must pass that background check, and there's a fee associated that we pay for that. The hours, the hours must be recorded in orders we can cover workman's compensation, because just because they're not paid, if they get injured, we are responsible for that, and we have to make sure that we have that coverage. Requires time investment in the training and scheduling, and just like any employee, you know, every employee that you have directly under you takes some of your time to make sure they're trained and doing it right. Additional supervision. And as we all know, sometimes volunteers are not always reliable, and so, you have to be that flexible, and make sure that it's not a, you know, mission-critical issue. Go ahead and hit it. Okay. Fire department opportunities, the fire department allows properly-trained volunteers, and this is not just, like, here's, I mean, highly, I mean, this is intense training, this is prequel training to become a fire, a fireman, a firewoman, to work alongside paid fire units. The FB recruits, FD recruits are hired from volunteer pools, and so, it's almost like this training ground, this reservist. And if you have any more questions on this program, this is for the fire chief can answer. But this is where, if you wanna get a job in Globe Fire, this volunteer program, reservist program is a way to get in there. Now, there's another position that Gary's talking about, and he sent me this slide, on possibly a victim coordinator. And, because my eyes are so bad, I'm gonna pull up the, pull up the slide. So, the function would be to accomplish the third tactical objective of the property conservation and customer stability. Assist victims of fires and traumatic injuries with short-term resources, coordinate Red Cross, supply emergency lodging and supplies and transportation. This is that, in an organization, in a city, when you have these tragedies, when you have these incidents, it would be nice, if we had the funds, we'd have a paid victim coordinator that could help out. But there are, there are systems where a volunteer victim coordinator can go in there and be that person to step in, help those people who are, have just had the, probably the worst day of their life, figure out where they go from here, how do they get it, you know, get shelter through the night, get control of their, what their resources they need, just someone to walk them through there after everything they've gone through. So, this is something that we're hoping for. Oh, forgot, go ahead and hit the next slide. Jeannie sent me a wonderful slide, and so, I didn't even wanna change it, because it was so beautiful. But, and so, on the finance department, it says, due to the sensitive, ongoing financial material processing, the finance department is limited in how we could use a volunteer. We could possibly use a volunteer for filing occasionally. So, I didn't wanna touch that, it's so beautiful. And, but it is tough in the finance department, you know, you have money, you have books, you have auditing, you have records, and there is some level of filing. But many of the service departments of the city, like the clerk and the courts and things like that, volunteers are just not so, not as appropriate. Do you wanna hit it again? Okay, and so Danny, oh, yeah, no, you're Danny, okay. The IT work is very specialized and does have limitations due to security requirements, so, you know, getting somebody into access to our servers, access to CASL, access to email and things like that, that's not something. But Danny and I talked, and he does need somebody to crawl through the ceiling to do cabling. I saw him about a day ago up there on a ladder himself, but if anybody wants to do that, we can help. But we were thinking, you know, software training, there are people out there who are experts on using Word and Office and Excel that could help out. And in the multimedia production, graphics and editing, I think especially student opportunities are something that we're really looking at, is getting... is getting someone that can kinda help out with, with manning the council meetings and, and producing the, the stuff that he does. And so I think there are some options there. Go ahead. Code enforcement. So, um, uh, code enforcement, uh, there are ways to volunteer there, uh, sharing the information about vol- uh, about violations. This is something that we're already seeing from, from some of the groups like, um, Curb Appeal and, um, oh, what's the other one? The? Clean and Beautiful. Okay, it, it's always to my tongue. But there, there are also program volunteering that you can do. We're thinking about, you know, the big, uh, if we do any big, uh, US-60 cleanup efforts, um, blighted neighborhood cleanups, uh, public information campaigns, which we've had volunteers help on. But the, the, the working as a, as a volunteer worker for the code enforcement is, is difficult. We need the continuity of enforcement, the, we need the dangers in approaching, uh, potential, uh, violators. You know, you can't really, you can't really have a volunteer driving a truck with a radio. She has to, Michelle has to radio in, um, and, and anyplace she goes. So you want that continuity in, in how we approach people. So they're, they're representative of the city, so it's not really conducive for out there in the field. In, inside and working with, um, internally, uh, the, the lack of office workspace and the, and the specialized logins we need now. We have some code enforcement software. Uh, and just workspace, we don't really have the, the place to, if we were to hire a worker and, and have them work under Michelle to, to fit in, uh, a place to, to put them to work. I think in the future, we may, we may get some expansion, be able to do that, but right at this point, it'd be hard to bring on a, uh, a code enforcement volunteer without, um, some investment in desks, tables, computers, and, and things like that, and a lot of training. Other opportunities? Oh, sure, go ahead.
So the, back to the previous slide. What, what we really do need to realize though is that we do have a group, um, that, that do help the code enforcement with going and identifying, um, the areas, the, the, the blighted properties, um, and, and I for one really wanna encourage that. I.
Yes.
That group does that, and we're very.
Yeah.
And it really helps, it helps free up Michelle to do the things that the, you know, the volunteers can't do.
Right.
We want to encourage and keep the, the volunteering going on.
Yeah, no, I mean, and, and she can't be everywhere at the same time and things pop up, and, and so anybody that, that has any type of, um, sees a code violation or, or something that is dangerous or something needs to be addressed, um, always open to, to, um, send that information, uh, share that with Michelle so, so she can take a look at it. And, and she is, the part of her job is when, when she gets a, a heads-up on a complaint, she will, she will go take a look at that and see if that complaint fits into the, in, into what she would consider a complaint. So we, she won't go out and, and cite or, or communicate with somebody, um, based on, on what other people say. She, she goes and sees the same thing, sees that, yeah, that violation is a violation and reaches that threshold, and then she will act. But, um, and many times these, these do reach that threshold. But we, she always confirms it. So when she walks up there, she doesn't say, oh, somebody said.
See, and that's what's important for the public to know, that the city doesn't say, hey, your neighbor called me, you know, or whatever the deal is. It's, it's not revealed.
Many people don't wanna, don't wanna say, you know.
They don't, they don't, because they don't want to have problems with their next-door neighbor or their.
Yeah.
Son's girlfriend's family or yada, yada, whatever. I mean, that, that matters, you know. Michelle's very discreet, and, and she does well with that.
Yeah, so when she goes there, she says, you know, I, um, you know, I, driving by, I did, I stopped, I looked and, and I see this. I see weeds, I see a refrigerator, I see a car or whatever, you know, and, and, and the, the, the scale is always what we can see from the street. And, uh, but, but she's not, you know, saying that, oh, you know, you're, you know, it's, it would just, it's, not only is it not appropriate to, to say, you know, who gave you the heads-up, but it's, she's not talking to them because somebody else gave the heads-up. She's talking to them because she showed up on the property and she saw a violation that meets the threshold, and so she is communicating because of what she saw. Not because what somebody else told her, but what she saw. So do you wanna? And, um, other opportunities, uh, active adult center, um, we didn't go deep into that, but I know that, that they're always willing to, to take on volunteers, a lot like the library. That you do have the, the issue of working with, uh, DOC workers down there, and, and so it is a little bit more complicated. Museum, uh, same thing. There's, there's room for volunteers out there, um, and that can, can help and cover shifts and things like that. And then, um, Public Works, that's one of the ones that, um, we have a little bit of trouble with, um, because of the nature of the work. Um, you have heavy equipment, you have, um, uh, you know, vehicles you need to get around, workman's comp, injuries, uh, you have to, to be working next to a department correction person. You have to go in through the training requirements and things like that. And, um, and so we, we don't get a lot of volunteers there, but for projects, you know, people who wanna come out and do flowers, people who wanna go out and do beautification, the cleanup that we do on, on the parks and stuff like that. That's where the, the partnership on these special projects during a limited amount of time. You wouldn't see somebody on a, on a, you know, 10 hours a week, always out there planting flowers, but you will see people during certain times, like the, um, when we, when we have the, the house tours, where you get a lot of volunteers, some of them in council, that will go out there and, and help plant plants and, and, and do some of that work. And so, um, I think the next one is just questions? Yeah. So, um, so we're, uh, staff is open to any questions on any departments that either I can answer, if you'd like me to call the directors up, and if you have any questions about volunteer opportunities.
I have a question on, on page number two. It says, effective date, March 27th, 2013, updated September 30th, 2019. So. Number 11 says, groups that are volunteering for specific projects may be required to provide their own certificate of insurance. In what instance would that be? It's page two, number 11. Groups that are volunteering for specific projects may be required to provide their own certificate. It's in your administrative policy.
Oh, okay.
Do you want it? You want? Here.
No, no, it's, it's.
You got it?
Chris, Chris knows what you're talking about, so I'm gonna call him up.
This would be in, for instance, if someone said, uh, I'm gonna volunteer to, to build flower pots downtown. And, um, they're not working with anybody else other than, um, their company or whatever, putting these things in. That would be an instance where they'd say, well, please provide a copy of your company's insurance policy. That, that would. It would be very limited that that would be used, but that's one scenario where I can see where it would be used.
So you're not talking about somebody volunteering helping the city put those plants in, or?
Well, not, not, not the plants, but, uh, I would, I just said planters.
Yeah, but I mean, we have people that do that.
Right, so if, um, if someone wanted to, um, construct a screening wall somewhere to block off, um, what they thought was, uh, something ugly, and. But, like I said, this is, it, it's just something that was put in there in the original, um, development of this policy, just in case there's, um, no, the, the city's not actually involved in doing it. It's strictly a, a group doing something.
Well, no, if, if somebody wouldn't volunteer to demo a home, that would be a good example, right?
Yeah, that's a better example.
You know, and, and that's a company that, that wants to do, do work for the city. Um, you know, if we're gonna let them go in there and do that, that's fine, but we, we have to make sure that we cover our liability and, and they're taking upon themselves to make decisions on, you know, how you push down a wall that, that no one gets hurt, that we need that insurance. So that would be the example. I don't think we've ever used that at the time I've been here.
No.
I understand, because you wouldn't allow somebody, I'm sorry, mayor, um, you wouldn't allow somebody to do something without first contacting you, so they wouldn't be in those situations, right?
Yeah, no, they'd have to, I mean, if, okay, say that again.
So you're, you're requesting that, that company or whoever this volunteer group is.
Yeah.
Give you their insurance re- requirements.
Yeah, if they were gonna come in with heavy equipment and say, and, and mow something down, in that example.
But you would've already vetted that company. You would've already figured out that they were a legit company. So now you're.
Yeah.
Putting out another roadblock yet again for these volunteers that wanna.
Well, I think this is part of the making sure they're legit and vetting them that they're a volunteer. I mean, I, I don't.
I don't like it. I don't like it. I don't like it at all. So we've got a group, we've got a group that drives around and identifies code violations, their group. Are we gonna tell them they gotta show us the insurance for their car, or what?
No, I, I don't think that's, uh, part of it. Let's say, for instance, Dahlin Construction wanted to go in and do a project. And we could just say, could you please provide a copy of your insurance? That would be.
I mean, they're volunteering to do the.
Right.
The work for the school district down at the stockyards, and I'm, I'm imagining that, that the school districts have probably talked to them about insurance coverage and things like that. I mean, we just happen to list it in the policy, but I think it's just common sense, and, and we listed it, so.
You're not anticipating this to be to individuals who are volunteering, no?
No.
So like, we wanna volunteer and beautify one of your benches. You're not talking.
No.
I couldn't even get a policy for that. It'd be, yeah.
I think when it says, what I, what I would, I think the, the appropriate change would be, would not be groups, but, but, um, but companies or, um, some type of a, some type of a structured organization, I, I guess, I mean, companies sounds a little awkward, too.
It just seems to me that this is really broad. I, I, I don't like it in there, because I think it's just.
Yeah, do we even need it in there? Do we even need it in there, I think, you know, is, is the key, you know? If you're gonna volunteer, you're gonna volunteer to help. If you're gonna get somebody to tear, that's gonna come in and do a project, there obviously gonna be a, a company that's gonna get a, a, a business license or something to do something. I mean, if, I don't understand why it's in there. I, I don't.
I don't see the, so. Are you saying that we, we shouldn't list it in here but shouldn't ask? Or are we saying we just should list it and just, I can't, we can't assume that if, if a company's gonna get a bunch of dump trucks and a backhoe and says, hey, we're gonna do this, we can't just assume that, that we're gonna check their requirements and make sure they're, if, if they need to be registered contractor, we're gonna make sure they're doing that. I would think to make sure that they have liability insurance, I think that, that's how this would apply.
Okay, but what is a specific project? Cause that's what it says, groups that are volunteering for specific projects. That's very broad and undefined.
Well, the, I mean, the whole, I mean, this is a policy that's kinda built to, to cover any scenario that could happen. I, it hasn't happened yet. I think, um, you know, we're, we're trying to predict what, what might be needed and, um, and, and fit that in there. I think it's common in, in other, other policy. It is something that we do realistically think that could happen. It is a scenario that, that is possible, so I don't think the, having it in, in the, uh, the policy is out of line, since there could be a scenario where a company could volunteer to, to, to do some construction work, and, and we may ask them for proof of insurance, and they probably have, have it, and they probably would provide us with that. And I, I don't think it's inhibiting, I don't, uh, anybody. I don't think a big company's gonna come in here and say, I was gonna do it, but oh, you're asking for insurance, so I'm just gonna go away.
Now, if, if that same company were being paid to do that, we would also require the insurance.
Oh, we, well, we'd have to go to procurement, we're paid.
Yeah.
You know.
Freddie? Yeah, thank you, mayor. Uh, I think what's getting lost here in this, in this language is, you know, um, groups that are volunteering for specific projects may be required. There's nothing here that says it's mandatory. And I think we have to have that flexibility to say, or for staff to make that determination that insurance is required. Don't forget, if we're talking about a company or, uh, an owner, um, licensed, and he starts coming in with heavy equipment and, and starts demoing and, and really starts doing some, some, uh, heavy lifting, uh, there's no place anywhere else in this state that I could s- think of that would not require insurance for something like that. So if we're gonna, if we're gonna go outside the box and say, okay, bring your heavy equipment, but you don't need insurance, um, I think we're putting ourselves out there. I think we're, I think the city would be putting themselves in, uh, in the crosshairs of a lawsuit.
I don't think that we were saying not have insurance. I'm, I think that what we were saying is, he, like he said, he's already checking to see if they have insurance.
Right, but.
If it was defined as, as to if you are using X, Y, and Z, you may need to show insurance.
Right.
But if you're doing something under this threshold, you won't need it.
That's, and that's my point. I don't think we should be taking it out of the language.
I mean, I, I think, I think it's something that, um, we would be welcome, any, any company that would come in and, and do this type of work. I think it'd be, I think council understands that, that if a, a company's come in, we, we need to ask for insurance, and so, um, yeah, we would, we would definitely check on that, and that, and that just notifies anybody that if, if they're doing, this is, uh, we're not, you know, just making this up as we go, but this is something that we've prepared for and, and enlisted as, as a possibility, um, for a large volunteer. I don't, um, so.
I actually have real examples where we did this. Uh, when we coordinated some major cleanups through Globe Clean and Beautiful, we actually had, um, companies that brought their loaders and heavy equipment, and we cleaned out entire neighborhoods, and they helped. So you're saying that we would wanna require them to show us that they have something in place prior to them actually volunteering?
Right, I would, I would think that would be, that would be the responsible thing to do, if, and we're happy that somebody's bringing roll-offs and bringing trucks and, and backhoe, but we wanna make sure that, that, that we're not putting those volunteers that are operating around there, or members of the public that may live in that area, uh, and that somebody may not really, you know, know how to, how to run a backhoe and, and may make a mistake, and, um, you know. I, I think it's just, uh, uh, the responsible thing to do, that if somebody's doing that level of effort and bringing in, and again, a paid crew, you know, they, they definitely should be, be insured. So. Is, if council would like to, to give direction to, to modify this policy, we, we welcome that.
Freddie? My recommendation is to, to not eliminate the, the opportunity or the, the may require insu- insurance. I, I think, again, if we take that out and we don't require insurance for, for some heavy lifting jobs, I think we're gonna be putting ourselves in, in a, in the crosshairs.
We're just covering our own.
Well, not only us, but that, that, that developer or that, that contractor or that business, whoever it is, they're, you know.
Or somebody has faulty equipment, they have a maintenance that, you know, they, I, I don't really know what the scenario, but people with the best intentions sometimes, you know, grab the long, the wrong loader and maybe there's a problem with hydraulics and it bursts a line and sprays hot oil on somebody or something. I don't, I don't know, but, you know, better, better safe to, to have that. You know, and if, um, you know, I, I, I don't think that's on, on that level of project, but I don't see this going down to, uh, an everyday volunteer, an individual, not a, not a, a, a company, but an individual who's, you know, even somebody, I mean, if, if somebody volunteered with a chainsaw and kind of wanted to help cut down trees, and we got them in the creek and everything like that, I don't think we'd, you know, we'd, we'd be asking him for insurance on something like that. We hope that he would know what he was doing, and if we saw that he didn't, we'd probably say, you know, maybe we should just get you something different.
I'm sorry, mayor. Would you anticipate seeing something like this being required on, on heavy lift jobs?
Oh, yeah.
Lift items?
Yeah, I mean.
Not just your regular.
No.
I won't say regular, not just a.
Commercial, I think commercial is a, I think commercial is the word, if, a, a commercial group.
Okay, but that's not in there, so I, I would like to see that in there. Commercial or specific projects is just so broad. That could be, you know.
But if we, we narrow it, then we might leave something out. You know, but I'm, I'm okay with, um, commercial groups.
I think when I think of a, a volunteering a big project, I see Dahlin, when they came in and did all this work up here, where we're looking at putting the dog park and putting those baseball fields. They donated a lot of equipment and time and effort on their part, and I'm sure they had their own insurance. They didn't come here without insurance. They insured themselves to make sure they were taken care of. Um, I can see it on that, but I, I would assume they would have it. I just think what, I think what you see there is that this could be a large project, but it could be a small project, a bench or something. That, that's what, I, I don't know, maybe just simplify it somehow, so, so people understand it.
Well, let me.
And you're talking about a city-led volunteer effort, not necessarily.
No, I mean, if it was like, uh, if it was a separate, not formed by the city group, I mean, this is people who volunteer for the city. These people who are authorized and, and, and wanna come in and, and, and go through the process, and, and we're leading them in there. Our staff is overseeing them. That's, that's what we're talking about. If, if a group of volunteers like Clean and Beautiful decides to go and contract with, um, a company to, to haul and, that maybe, where they, they chipper thing, that they, where they take the, the brush and, and chip it and throw it in the truck or anything like that, you know, that's kinda dangerous, but I hope they know what they're doing. But it's not the city, it's, it's another nonprofit group or somebody else. It's only if it's. It's only if it's... If the city is directly involved in this, it's a city event or a city project.
Jerry, do you got a comment on this, please?
So, a couple of things. By taking that language out, we do have properties that we maintain that on the mines and so forth that require insurance requirements. This is maybe one of those instances. Leaving that language in there makes us have the ability to do that. Also, there are individuals with a piece of equipment out there that we would want to see proof of insurance before we would let them go in and tear out a sidewalk or help with a drainage structure or something like that. So I'm just cautioning, taking the language out completely. To add the verbiage, if needed or maybe required, would be appropriate, I would think, in this area there. OD Mine Park's a good example. We would have trouble going in without providing BHP with proof of insurance. So if we did anything major in that area. So that was my only comment. I didn't want that to be overlooked.
So nobody has suggested that we totally take it out. I would like it modified.
I think it says... Does it say maybe?
It does. It says groups that are volunteering for special projects may be required to provide their own certificate insurance. Groups is too broad and, in my opinion. And specific projects, what's that mean? That my idea, yours and yours are going to be three totally different things. But I can be outvoted.
Well, and this, like I say, this is a presentation only, so I would rather if I could get a consensus from council on how to change this rather than bring it back for a vote, that would be...
Well, I think we're supposed to be talking about it because it says updated September 30th, 2019, and we're not there yet. So that's our job right now is to be discussing it, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I think... So what is council's pleasure on changes to...
Mayor, if I might?
12th.
So I kind of understand if somebody's operating heavy equipment or something like that that could malfunction, but when you just say groups, I mean, now I have to, what, pick up the phone and call you to decide what? And it's already difficult enough to get people that want to give their time and energy to help and then to just put more and more hurdles. I think I'm not willing to do that. But if we could say something to the effect that if heavy equipment or something like that is required, there may be some kind of proof of insurance that may be required. I mean, that makes more sense to me than getting the Globe, Clean, and Beautiful group to go work on a bench, and now we have to have a powwow before we decide we're going to go out and work. And that's the other thing. Everything that we've ever done is Globe, Clean, and Beautiful has been blessed by the city, and now it sounds like we're not being blessed by the city.
What do you mean by blessed?
Well, it's like, well, they're their own group, they're their own thing, and we have nothing to do with it.
No, no, I'm talking in the liability sense. We... There are things that we take on the liability and things that we don't take on the liability. So, you know, in the way of community support and the partnership with all these groups, don't misread what I'm saying. We're asking... We're talking about a liability issue here. And so I'm saying that we have to define, you know, what we're worried about, what we have to... What we take on, we have to... We will own. And but if we support, if council just says, yeah, go out there and do good, and we're all behind you, but we're not overseeing it, we're not giving you direction, we're just, you know, just a bystander like everybody else, then that's what I mean. But that means that we're not behind it or supportive of other nonprofits or groups or organizations helping out and beautifying the city. We're all on the same team. So I don't... But don't misread what I'm saying here in a technical argument about liability to mean that we're saying the city is, you're on your own. Is it? And if I reflected that, I apologize.
I kind of understand the insurance part of it, too. I think if we change that from groups to specialized projects may require insurance, additional insurance, you know, such as operating equipment or something, just putting... Instead of just the groups in there, maybe just specialized projects may require additional insurance. And then that way...
If you define the special projects...
Yeah. I'd be afraid to define the special projects because I don't know...
Because, yeah, it wouldn't be...
You know, we'll miss something.
Examples. I'm not saying define...
Oh, examples, yeah. I can do examples. Such as...
Yeah, exactly.
Such as, okay. Can we... Specialized projects or commercial... Or, yeah, we don't say commercial, operators of, including heavy equipment.
For example.
Yeah, for example, you know, backhoes to mow down a house or something like that.
Require technical.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that way we're covering our tails.
Industrial. Or heavy equipment. No, well, then, let me do that, and then let me email out to everyone. Or do you want me to bring this back?
No, just email it. No, we don't need to bring it back.
We're good.
Are we having huge losses in insurance? Because we always bring up liability now. It's like every meeting, we have some issue with liability. Are we just trying not to... What is... What's the issue?
Well, I think we're... I think we always have to take care when council is making, you know, recommendations and working on things that, you know, that we need to make sure that we don't...
Are we having a lot of claims? Are we getting complaints? Are we getting talked to by our risk pool or what?
No.
Okay, so nothing's been broken for a long time, but now all of a sudden, we have to take this hard action and limit and label things and have really defined policies.
No, so you were asking, why was this request for liability in here? And I explained to you that it's a liability issue.
Right, and I'm trying to discover why all of a sudden it's such a huge issue.
I don't think it's a huge issue. I think it's a topic of the current discussion.
Good. Moving forward with that suggestion, we'll just move forward with that, then.
Okay.
We'll have to email.
Okay. So we'll go item E, council will hear a presentation updating council on the dog park project and possibly give direction to staff.
And, Mr. Mayor, there... All right. No other questions on...
Good.
Okay, good. Okay. It just had... There it goes, my doggy. Okay. And...
Those are some happy doggies.
Yes. So... Uh-oh. Oh, there it comes. Okay, so just a little background on this. We've been working on the dog park. There's a history up here, but working on it. And we just kind of give you, council, an update on a couple of issues that are on the table, and I think it's a timely presentation. So on the history, in 2008, the insistence of the community, a temporary dog park was established, not a ball field. 2010, 2012, multiple committee meetings there, the creation of a subcommittee under the City of Globe Parks and Rec Committee on the dog park. In 2017, 2018, evaluation of proposed sites. In 18, funding... Funds were budgeted for fencing and irrigation system. In June of 2018, the dog park user survey was put out, and the results were tabulated. And then funds in 19 funds were budgeted for cement work, remadas, benches, and that work is definitely underway. So you want to hit the... So, and that's just a little footprint of where you see that in that area. It's right up next to the BHP property behind the second baseball field. And so this is an artist's rendition of what was suggested as amenities. And one of the reasons we're talking about this is the public really wants to... Is it auto? Oh, okay. I can't keep up. The public has a desire to add value to this park. They want to donate, they want to volunteer, they want to donate, they want to do benches, they want to do additional features. They want to make this above and beyond what the city has budgeted. So that's why you have some of these layouts that's included here. And there's a little, if you look at here, there's trees and remadas and benches and tunnels and shallow water ponds and things like that. These are things that the supporters of this park would like to see added here. And here is a little artist's rendition of a fixture, of a shade structure and the entrance. And so I just wanted to share that with you. And then even to the point where these groups of very avid volunteers had kind of worked up on their own unofficially a name for the park, and it's K-9 Mine Bark Park in Globe, Arizona. So this was suggested by the... Through the survey and community meetings as a possible name. And then a draft logo, I guess Tanner put that together on his own. So you see the very, very happy dog and rolling along there. So benches, some other ideas of some of the benches in here and fixtures. I love the wean your dog. That's kind of a keeper. And people are looking to, once this park is completed, to hopefully, you know, add these to the park. Community requests. The dog park users want an update on the city on their plans in the form of a meeting and their ability to give suggestions. I think that, you know, the park is going to be built, and it's on its way, but ways they can improve it. They want to contribute towards the amenities like trees and art, and the dog park users want to volunteer for the work projects, do those increases in amenities. And so we get to the last slide, council information direction. So that presentation was one that's been put together and I think shown around. This is to tie it in for what we're... City staff is asking council at this point. Just let... City staff wanted to let council know there's strong community support. Active groups of supporters for the past two years have been supporting this, and they're ready to go. There is no formal structure. There is no organization with a 501(c)(3) or really a name. It's an organic group that's grown from their love of dogs and their sharing and their... My understanding is they're already using the location right now where the dog park will be, and they talk and they meet, and they hope and they dream. And these people have a desire to donate. Supporters are ready to begin adding additional amenities to the park once it's completed. And so we're looking for ideas on that. And again, they had talked about, and so there is a recommendation. I think there would be a good thing for... Staff believes it would be a good thing to hold that public meeting, for the city to organize an onsite public meeting, educate the public on what the current park, what we're already committed to, what council's already committed to, and what's going to be done, so they know what it's going to look like when it's completed, gather feedback from the public, and then talk about future donations, donation process, volunteer process, and let those people who all are, you know, excited about this, give them what's next. Let the city tell them what's going to happen, you know, and what they can do, and how can they donate and things like that. The other request from council is there is this informal park name, the name of the park, the Bark Park, that's out there, but staff would like to hear from council as to, how would you go about it? We never, I don't think, have had the conversation about how we will name that park. It is a city park, and it's the city's responsibility for somehow coming up with what we will call it from the future forward. And so we're looking for guidance from council on what process you would like to use, whether... And then we'll have John give you a quick what's next or on just 30 seconds on where we're going from here. But on that conversation about the naming, how would like council... What is council's pleasure on how to proceed on naming the park?
So there was a survey done. Thea or Linda, one of you want to speak to that?
Yeah.
Thea, you want to speak to that about the survey? Because a lot of people don't realize that that happened. And, you know, the people that use the dog park are a... It's a certain group, you know? I mean, they're dog owners, they're dog lovers, maybe they have a small yard, maybe they just want to socialize their dog, whatever the case may be. But this is... This group has been really meeting and active, and a lot of us, maybe, we're not aware of that.
I think, if I'm understanding your question, you're wanting to know about that survey.
Yeah.
So I know that the dog park users had recommended to the city that they do a survey of some sort, Survey Monkey, anything. And we were waiting on that, waiting on that, and I think that it was just number 1,001 on the list of to-dos. So I volunteered to say, may I put a survey forth? And I gave all the questions to John and to Linda to get them pre-approved. I then took it to the dog park, and I had... It was out for about a week. I think we had distributed 25 of them to different people. 20 of them came back. Those were tallied. Those results, I believe, were shared, just like we also had shared a survey looking at the use patterns of what time of day and which people are coming at what time. So we've been trying to give you info to help you in your decisions as you're planning this park. So that's where that survey came from, was a step to hopefully help the city get info from the users.
So there's the key. It's the users. The users of the dog park...
Correct.
Are the people that turned in the surveys.
Correct.
So they came up with the names themselves, the users, too?
They came up with a number of different names, but yes. I... You can put it forth as a vote if you'd like. I think, I mean, I think that what... There was a number of things that came up at that, and then there've been meetings since where this came up. Personally, I was pushing for a baseball theme because I have been working 20 years on a mine park. And so I was kind of pushing for baseball, but I got outvoted. And I really liked when someone suggested K-9 Mine and the rhyming of it, the whole Bark Park. Cute, catchy. So I think that those are... Those things have come from the community members at these meetings and through the survey.
John really likes the little hat that the dog wears. Well, I think we should meet at the park, is what I think, and at the dog park, with the dog park users.
I know we have requested that. As far as dog park users, I go up there probably five days a week with my small pony of a dog, and he loves it up there. And at our request, I believe that John and Linda are offering a meeting on Wednesday of next week, September 18th. It's tentative at this point, it can change, but at 6:00 at the site where people actually are. Couple nights ago, at 6:00, we had 25 different people with 25 dogs getting along just fine, hanging out in different groups, talking within that little ball field. So meeting up there makes a lot of sense. And people have questions, and I'm doing my best to kind of intermediary relay info, but it's really not my role to represent the city in this. I bring info from the users, is what I see my role. And I would love to have the city represented by John, by Linda, by council people, whomever.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, I think Linda wanted to add a little to this.
I just really wanted to thank Thea for helping to facilitate this project along because I think this was budgeted two years ago. And, you know, it did get put on the back burner for a number of reasons, and Thea's really kept this moving and grooving because she is part of the dog park community. And the other night, when I went up with 25 people there, and we have a speaker, Barbara, that was one of those people. It's an amazing community. They're super tight-knit, they know each other's names, they definitely know all the dogs' names, and it's just... It's really a welcoming community. I think it's, you know, having a really cool dog park is a great amenity for us to have in our community. And I think having it branded, having it, you know, kind of catchy, I think that's just going to, you know, enhance the offerings that we have to out-of-town visitors. And I'll tell you, last week I was on Broad Street. I had somebody stop me and ask, well, where is your dog park? We're out of town, and we have our dog with us. Where can we take our dog to let him run around because we're on the road traveling? So I, you know, sent them in that direction. So I think, and that's, you know, just one of many times that I'm sure this happens. I just happened to be stopped on Broad Street. But again, going back to, you know, thinking Thea, I think, you know, she's really been our advocate and our contact and conduit with the dog park community. So, you know, I look forward to working with the dog park community, and hopefully we can have that meeting next Tuesday at 6:00 PM because we've kind of promised them that we would... our advocate and our contact and conduit with the dog park community. So, you know, I look forward to working with the dog park community and hopefully we can have that meeting next Tuesday at 6:00 PM because we've kind of promised them that we would, or next Wednesday, September 18th. And I think it's great to hear the community's feedback, the community that actually uses it, you know? I think it's great. They got 20 responses back from 25 surveys sent out. I mean, if that, if we had survey participation like that, you know, of everything that we do, it'd be a success.
I have a question. I know my daughter and wife go up there all the time with our dog. I haven't been there for a long time.
Winston.
Winston, yes, he goes up there. But my question is, is there, I know that there's facilities for restrooms there somewhere, but are they open to the public? And wouldn't that be something that we should maybe take into consideration so that the people who let their dogs go potty, they can too go potty? Just wondering.
Yep. Well, let's put that on our wish list. I'm sure that will be feedback from our dog park community.
Okay.
I got a comment on, and I want to commend you, Thea, for taking the lead on this and taking control of this. I think there's been a lot of work being done, but a lot of it, people weren't really under the understanding of what was happening. But I think it was important that you were communicating with John and Linda, understanding where we were heading with it. And I think it's important that the people that use it make those suggestions. I love the name, I love the logo. I think this is, I think we visioned, or what's visioned about this town hall that was held, we want people to take these projects, be the lead on them, and we as a city are the supporters of it. And this is what's happening here. And, you know, it's moving forward and hopefully helping out John in his process, helping the city out in the process. But this is what we need, people to take the lead and take these projects, just stay in communication with who they need to, so we understand what's going on.
Exactly. I think Thea's the perfect example of a community champion, keeping these projects going and, you know, communicating with staff. In fact, that logo, I wanted to kind of go back to that. That logo was used last year when we worked on the Dogtoberfest event. And so, you know, it was really marketed well, so I think staying consistent with that, I think, you know, it has value, so let's not let that go. And again, as we build this to be an asset, an amenity for our community, and maybe even bring Dogtoberfest back because dog events are huge. People who are really into their dogs, they travel for these events, they go all over the state, so why not bring them into Globe to attend an event here? John, did you want to come up?
Sure.
I have a letter here. I'm not going to read the whole letter, it's from Cheryl Whited that lives over on Blake Street, but I'm, so it's a whole page long, I'm not going to read all that, but there are two paragraphs that really are important. "Dog owners need a safe, fun place to bring their dogs where they can socialize with others." I'm assuming that means the dogs and the people. "It helps the dogs in our community be better citizens as they have an opportunity to learn to behave around other dogs and people," which is so true, some, like our dogs only stay in our yard. They socialize with each other, but not outsiders, you know? And then she also writes, "I'm so grateful that the town is going to keep having a place for dogs to go to socialize and play." That really sums it up, it really does. Thank you, Mayor, for doing that, Cheryl.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to commend you, Thea, that, you know, like you said, you're not the spokesperson for the city, but you've taken it and really ran with it, and I think that's really commendable. I also wonder if an information board, a construction information board, might have been helpful with something like this. So if it was broken down in phases, the people then you couldn't get to, or people that are new to go there, might be able to read that and see where we were going and what the vision was and who to contact, something of that nature. And so I'm wondering, Paul, if we could look into doing that with future construction and this one as well, you know, so the community, there's transparency and who they can contact. You know, these, sometimes people can't make it to our meetings, but I think that if we have something there for them, that would be amazing. And I concur that you guys, I mean, you have an amazing group, it sounds like they're really into it and that's awesome, I need to get up there. But I love the logo, I love the name, it's awesome. Thank you.
Do you have a speaker card?
I have two speaker cards, I can call them. I have Robert Shirkey.
Mr. Mayor and City Council members, I appreciate you listening to us. I wanted to take this opportunity to really thank you for your support for the dog park. It's a great place for our dogs to get out, interact, exercise, and it's also a great just community time for people to, you know, exchange ideas and interact. Also, I thank you again, and so does my Siberian Husky Timber.
Thank you. Thank you both. Barbara Spear?
We really appreciate so much what you've done for the dog park. It has been so much help. I had no idea there was a dog park. And I got this dog, Autumn, that is high energy. And this has been the best thing for her, learning to socialize and helping her to behave better. And thank you so much, it was so awesome. And like Thea said, there are people, they have came up to the dog park and they said that they had been trying to find somewhere to stop so their dog could exercise. And anyway, thank you so much, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, Barbara. Okay, I wonder if we can get John just before we close up to make sure, what's the next step, where are we at, I guess, just to update the council briefly?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just want to kind of share the thought, thanking Thea for all the enthusiasm that we've gone out there, when I've gone up there looking at the site. I usually have a couple groups or some people will stop and ask me where we're at on that. As far as the progress, I'm actually happy to say that I believe our stars are finally lining up, coming to a point. Of course, we've always had the support from Mayor and Council to have, to make the dog park. Unfortunately, staff-wise, we were kind of down in the last five months. We've actually hired five employees. I've increased our inmate population, so I think we're finally at the gate, so to speak, to do additional work. I just met up there with Jerry Barnes yesterday afternoon and kind of went over the layout where we were hoping to get started. Unfortunately, we did have, it's probably a good thing, we did have the rain this weekend, so the crews have actually been doing some cleaning of the roads. But I anticipate hopefully start within the next few days, actually probably first of next week, since it's where I would almost, to me, one midweek, so. But the next phase, if you've gone up there recently, we did do the preliminary fencing as far as the entranceway. I originally anticipated starting from the back and work in front. We did a lot of the groundwork and brought in some topsoil and laid that out. But unfortunately, a lot of times when we have a lot of open area, we have a lot of kids that go up there and used it as an obstacle course and we're ramping over hills and once again, the liability factor comes up. So we actually put the fencing in the front to kind of eliminate the traffic that would be going into the park, because when we would level that, you know, the dirt out and stuff, the very next day we'd have kids and going up in the evenings and doing what they do up there. And so the next step would be for us to start finalizing that fence line around the outskirts of the property in the backs, from the sides, heading towards the mine property. And we've actually also ventured into some additional space in the front where would be the special needs, so to speak, or, you know, how we had talked about separating from the big dogs to the small dogs. So we're kind of designated another area so we can work with there. And all that really falls within, you know, what we originally had planned, even the map that was up on the screen. If you look at what's currently up there, it doesn't have that full outline, but looking at this additional space, it would actually follow the original plan. Any questions?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I know that there's a lot of things that are, you know, probably more important to the city's infrastructure to get done. And I think it's hard if it's your passion or you're, you know, you're a dog person, then this is what you want done yesterday. So thanks for hanging in there and doing what you can do and we appreciate all of it.
So, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, and again, I want to echo Thea's support and her passion and, you know, and she is that super volunteer that offers the guidance, you know, will take on the special projects, will share with us the information that benefits us, so kudos to her. The, and so the only piece of the puzzle left that I would like to ask council is, what is council's desire for moving forward on how we finalize a name for the dog park? And you could do anything from, you know, do a...
They've done, Thea and her group have done all the work and the survey. I don't have a problem with the name, they...
Okay, so yeah, and there's no reason why we can't just take the Bark Park and adopt that? And that would be if that's council's...
Only about the Canine Mine, that's pretty cool. I like it just the way it is.
Yeah. So is it council's direction to adopt? Let me make sure I get it right. Let's see, put the logo back up.
Canine Mine Bark Park.
Bark Park.
Sorry, Thea, you're going for a mine.
Right there, that's the one. Yeah, so Canine Mine Bark Park Globe, Arizona, that would be the official name of that, if council's direction is such and it appears to be. And then are we okay in adopting that as our logo for the park? Okay, good. Well, and...
I have one question. Thea, this is, question's for you, this was the winning language for the survey you did?
So in the survey we did, there were multiple suggestions that came up, and then from those, there were two meetings afterwards that people then kept adding to it.
Thea, come.
Got to get you on camera.
We didn't vote on this name. This is the name that has evolved out of meetings after that survey. We can vote if you would like, we can ask people for other suggestions, but this is just, you know, someone else would say, well, what about this? And someone else would say, well, I don't like that font. And like right now, people don't really like the Canine Mine and the Globe Arizona font, it doesn't fit. So I just keep giving feedback to Tanner, he's the one that's been adjusting it.
Well, I, just my recommendation, I mean, because it's, I mean, it sounds like it's still evolving and you've put a lot of work, obviously a lot of work into it with all of your, you know, all the other participants in the dog park. Maybe we do get a final vote.
Sure.
That way, you know, we're supporting something that your entire group is supportive of.
And all of this has always been suggestive.
Right.
So it, yeah?
I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to see the baseball theme. I'm kind of partial to baseball myself, so.
Come up with a good one, I'll add it to a ballot and we can go forward.
I think, you know, at this point, you know, it sounds like council's very supportive of the movement, but let's, you know, let's anchor it.
Sure, gladly.
Again, that's my recommendation.
Thank you, Freddie.
And everything that I'm doing is going through John and Linda. So just FYI, I'm bringing it to them, I'm getting their approval, going back, then I'm coming back to them. So it is, it is all the interaction that I get to do with the community. I explain, this is all draft and suggestions, but it's up to the city. So please know that.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Thea. So, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, so we kind of have two options on here now. I mean, we can adopt it right now as is, or do you want to go back and get some type of validation from the group in the form of a vote or up or down vote? I don't know, I don't think we want to go to a comparison and open up to other options. But what is council's pleasure?
I think Thea can go back and say that the council supports this logo, but to get the final is to get their final approval on it.
Okay. And are we okay with Thea coming back in two weeks and just expressing that, that is? And if she comes back and expresses that, we'll adopt it formally and we'll probably just put it in agenda items, formally adopt it, and so we have a nice clean set of minutes and records that this is it. So we can do that.
Oh, I would like a little more than two weeks so we can do that community meeting.
No, no, four weeks would be better. We're already getting loaded up on our, in two weeks, so four weeks. Okay, we'll do that. And so there's no vote, this is a presentation, we have council direction, so we're good. So thank you, Mayor, Council.
Item F, Presentation to Council on How Residents May Report Various Neighborhood Complaints. Michelle.
Mayor and Council, how are you this evening?
Good, thank you.
So this is just a real quick, just a couple slides. One of my biggest things, people stop me on the street, they'll call me, email me, anyways they want to communicate with me and they're asking me, I don't know if I'm supposed to ask you, who do I call? That's their biggest thing, who do I, who do I call? And on my end, if someone contacts me and it's something for economic development, I pass it to Linda, if it's something for Paul, I pass it to Paul, I pass it to John. I try to get it to the right person. This is a real quick, who do I call? I personally take care, I mean, I think we should take care of 911 calls, like those should only be for dire emergencies. So at the end, we're going to give specific numbers that you can call for different situations. Thank you, Shelley. So for animal calls, if there's a vicious animal attacking another animal or, you know, a person, we'll call 911. Animals showing signs of aggression, if you just see an animal that looks, you know, just looks crazy like it's going to bite someone, that would just be where you would just call dispatch, that wouldn't necessarily be 911. If there's a javelina or something like that at large, I don't know, horse wandering in the street, we can call Animal Control. Active acts of animal cruelty, if you are, if you witness an act, call 911. Suspicious, suspicion of animal cruelty, if the animal just doesn't, you know, look well taken care of or you think, you look over there, he doesn't have shade or food or water, you can call Animal Control. And I did, just real quick, I did contact John from the county and make sure it was okay that I'm saying this in our public forum, if these have been okay by him, instances when we can contact their agency. Indi-domestic animals at large, so they, you have the, you know, aggressive dog that's running around the neighborhood, you can call Animal Control. Barking dogs, Animal Control or Dispatch. Other complaints, active criminal activity, you see a crime in progress, you can call 911. Suspicious activity, someone just looking suspicious, I guess, and you feel like there's something about to happen, you can call dispatch and run it by them and they can make the decision whether to call an officer or not. Active noise complaints, so, you know, the big party that's happening at 3 o'clock in the morning, you can call dispatch. If there's a code violation, you can call me. If your neighbor is not taking care of the animal well and their smell's coming from, you know, the neighbor's yard, you can call me. Abandoned vehicles, on the right of way, you can call me. Trespassing, if there's someone trespassing on private property or a business, you can call dispatch. So these are the actual numbers to call for 911, you call 911. Dispatch is 928-402-1872. For Animal Control, you can call 928-425-5882, that's at the county. And for Code Enforcement, this is my cell number, it's 928-961-0117. Or you can call the city number and then, I'm extension 18.
And, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, we had this question, this was requested by council to share with us who to call. And it is sometimes confusing. First, I urge everyone to, if you see something, you know, do call somebody, don't wait, you know, if you think, should I call, you probably should. You know, that break between 911 and dispatch, if you call dispatch, if you're wrong and you think, well, I don't know if I should really call some 911, they'll elevate it or they'll decide. And sometimes you can call 911 and they'll say, you know, it's not, doesn't quite reach there, but do go either way and try to call someone. And then whether it's Animal Control and Code Enforcement. Now, I know Animal Control is Monday through Friday, 9 to, 8 to 5, but it's not always, you know, clear as to, as who you call. But when you call, if you see something, if you're worried about somebody, you know, you always say, oh, I'm sure somebody else has called. Not always, everybody else is sitting there going, I'm sure somebody else has called. Just, I'd rather see, I think everyone would rather see dispatch or 911 get multiple calls and no call at all.
And for Animal Control, it's, we're kind of crossover, I've helped... And for, and animal control, it's, we're kind of crossover. I've helped, I've assisted John on many things. He'll call me and say, hey, Michelle, come with me. I'm dealing, this guy's trying to sell puppies out of his trunk of his car and I've gotten six calls. Will you come with me? Or sometimes I call him and, and they'll assist me. So, they are awesome with helping me with situations that I need help with.
And I just wanted to ask Dale to, to stress that on, you know, there's difference, you know, with, with animals, but if you see something. And I know in Globe, if people, you know, three days later, they like to bring it up. But Dale, anything you wanted to add?
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. So, if there's a, a potential threat of danger to bodily harm or to the neighborhood or something, you can call dispatch, call 911. The abandoned vehicle issue, that could go either way. Either PD could handle it or zoning, depending on what it is. So, you're always safe to call dispatch if you need to. If it's something that's going to be a, a city code violation, it'll fall under Michelle. If it's something that's a Title 28 violation, PD will handle it and we'll cross over. So, if I get it and it needs to go to her, we'll just transfer it over to her and talk with her and help her out and vice versa. So, but calling the non-emergency night line, unless it's an act of violence in progress or, or something really suspicious that you need to get checked out, the non-emergency line is the best way to go, to dispatch.
Chief, I have a question. I know nobody uses phone books anymore. So, how are we going to remember that dispatch number? Is that, if you Google that, is that going to come up as a non-emergency line on dispatch if we put in Globe Dispatch or?
If you put, it's, it's Hela County Dispatch is what it is. So, we can put it, we can post it up. It's posted at the PD. We can repost it on, on Facebook. But yeah, if you Google County, it should come up. And we can put it on the PD website at some point in time also. So.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we're gonna, we're gonna add a little sidebar on the website constantly on there that, that shows these, these four different numbers to, to call, just so people, they, okay, I want to call animal control, what's that number? And, and that'll get it in the, the search and, and start popping up. But, but we'll post these on the, on the website also.
It can be a little confusing in this community because we don't have our own dispatch. It goes through the county. So, we just need, need to make sure that it's properly listed. Any other questions?
No. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Michelle.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, there's no action, just informational and for council. Fulfill that requirement of, the request of council.
So, we go to consent calendar. Matters listed under the consent calendar considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion, one vote. Public hearing items are designated with asterisk. Prior to consideration to the consent agenda, the mayor will ask whether any member of the public wishes to remove a public hearing item for separate consideration. Members of the council and/or staff may remove any item for separate consideration. A, consideration of waiver of section 2-4-10A, prior discussion ruled to allow action on the balance of the consent agenda. Accounts payable, $574,664.60. Consideration of approval of council minutes, May 22, 2019, special meeting minutes, May 28, 2019, meeting minutes. Consideration of agreements and purchases of less than 25,000. Consideration of late August building permits. Consideration of late August building permits? Is that correct, I guess? Okay. Consideration of the fleet report. Council will consider and approve, possibly approve fiscal year 1819, fourth quarter distribution of bed tax fund in the amount of $12,668.66 to the Globe Miami Regional Chamber of Commerce to be paid out of account number 10-51-51900, general fund, community organizations. Council may discuss and possibly authorize Genie as a CFO on behalf of the City of Globe to submit annual expenditure limitation report to the Auditor General. Consideration to approve Arizona liquor license application number 0704022 for Adrian Villalobos, controlling agent for the La Casita Downtown Globe. Report to council for the approval of special liquor license for Tracy Quick for the first annual Cousins Crawl event in October 18, 2019. Is that supposed to be a Cousins Crawl or a crawl? Crawl. Okay. Thank you. Do you have anybody from the public, the staff, or the council that would want to remove any of these items?
If not, I move that we go ahead and accept the consent agenda.
Second, we have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify. Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed. New business, we have discussion and consideration to issue invitation for bid IFB number CS-2019-0013 for the Holgate Lift Station Electrical Upgrades Project in the amount not to exceed $60,000 from account number 51-80-53100, wastewater treatment plant CIP fund. Jerry.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is a carryover item from last year's CIP. We finally are asking your permission to go out to advertise for IFB. It is an upgrade for the electrical system plus an upgrade for the generator as an alternate bid. It, we're having trouble even getting anybody to work on it. So, I don't code right now. So, you want to say anything, Frank?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to add that, you know, this has been long overdue. It's aged equipment. It needs to be upgraded and brought up to code. Yeah. Pretty close to 30 years at least and brought back up to code like it was initially built and, you know, just make things safer down there.
And, and this is in the Pioneer Hills area?
This is in Pioneer Hills area.
Has that, has that lift station ever been worked on since they developed that down there?
We've worked on it and we've been replacing pumps and so forth in it. But in order to, to get the electrical needs that we need in there, we have to upgrade the entire station.
Mr. Mayor, I got a question. And I know you told me the answer, but I don't remember what the answer was. When you took me out and toured all the facilities and we looked at that lift station, I think I asked if there was any redundancy or anything backup, like, like a backup system in there. What was the answer to that?
At the lift station, there's two pumps. There's two wet wells in the lift station. There's a primary wet well and a secondary wet well. So, we have pumps in both, both pits and they both run off of load systems. So, for, as a safeguard, if the main pump goes out, it'll bypass directly into the secondary pit. And when the secondary pit hits a certain level, it'll set off an alarm. That pump will kick on and it'll, you know, continue to work like it's supposed to. But we do not have any third one. We're relying only on that second one to ensure everything works properly. So, we don't have any backup or overflows or anything like that. It gives us enough time to get down there and respond and try to fix that first pump and get it back up and running and functional as soon as we can.
Are, are either one of those like a mechanical backup, like a generator, or is it just all electrical power?
There is a generator. There's an emergency generator located onsite in case of a power outage. So, we can, so we can have continuous.
Again, it's a 30-year-old generator that we, that we have an alternate on this. We don't know how the pricing is going to come in. So, if pricing comes in right, we'll go ahead and, and do, do the alternate as well. But, but we, you know, we might be back counsel and saying, hey, the price coming at this. So, what do you think about purchasing this generator? So, we, we would like to go out and advertise because both our electrical engineers and, and, and our project managers don't, are, are far apart on where they think their job should be as far as price. So, we need to actually get out there.
Mr. Mayor.
Freddie.
So, if you could just educate me a little more on, on what's, what you're looking to do. Is, is this the entire service entrance section, the meter can, the control center?
It would be basically the control center and new wiring and make sure that.
Be a gut.
Yeah.
It'd be a gut.
Upgrade the, the electrical panels basically from the main circuit coming in.
So, we, when you say gut, take, keep the panel, but just gut all the?
Right. And, and, and bring everything up to code as we go up.
Would this, would this bid, can you just replace everything entirely? I mean.
They have the option to do that, yes. And one of the differing opinions we had with the different people involved was because if we tried to replace everything within the current system, we think that those parts would be a lot more expensive because they're harder to come by. And so, when we rewrote the scope, we, we wrote the scope with the option to replace it all.
Right. Okay, good. Because I'm just living off of experience.
That's, we, we thought of that too.
I had an electrical panel one time where my electrician had to find parts on eBay and that got really scary. So, so that's what we said.
We think we're going to sell, sell these parts on eBay.
Yeah.
You'll be able to buy them, those parts.
Yeah, we, we thought of that. And, and at one point, our electrician was, our electrical engineer was up around 90,000. And, and then when we put that option in there to replace it all, he was okay with dropping the, the engineer's estimate down to where we needed to be, where you show it down.
As long as you have that option, yeah, that'd be, that's, that's good.
So, and, and we, we absolutely need to put pumps in there that we can rely on. And we can't do that with the electrical system that's in there right now. So, and, and we, we do want to upgrade the, the generator, whether it be under this contract or a future CIP item, depending on the prices we get. That's what we need to find out. Because we, you know, we have a backup generator, but I'm not for sure how far back it is. So.
Back to the future.
So, so the, the amount of 60,000 doesn't include a generator or does include new pumps, just, just the electrical itself?
The electrical upgrade plus the alternate. And we, 60 is what we've allocated for the project. If it comes in way above that, then we'll have to rethink.
Okay.
So, you know, we, we're optimistic at this point. So, we're asking council's permission, our direction to go out to advertise for an IFB on this.
So, do we, we don't need a motion to move it forward? You just want direction at this point?
No, he wants a motion. He wants a motion. So moved.
Do we have to waive the rule?
Or is it?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, with this whole return back, this is not the last stop for this item on council. So, motion to, to approve the request. You don't have to waive the rule because when we get the request and go to fund this and, and pay for it, it'll be back on.
Bring the contract back.
Yeah. So, this is not the last stop at council. This is first read.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
Well, then I make a recommendation that we allow staff to put this out to bid.
Second. Motion second to allow staff for, to go out for bid. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify. Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed. Thank you, Jerry.
We're, we're not leaving you.
Oh, you're not done yet.
Not that easy, not that quick.
He's got his hands out, you know.
Discussion.
Long ways from back there.
Yeah. Well, I was going to wait till you got back and then call you back up.
Trouble when he looks up with his hand.
It's thinking in my head, right?
So, we have discussion and consideration to issue an invitation for bid for the installation only of an alternate aeration basin to be funded in the amount not to exceed $50,000 from account number 51-80-53100, wastewater treatment plant CIP fund.
So, Mayor and Council, remember that last motion. Well, that's what we're asking for again. So, with our new rehab down at the wastewater plant, I don't know if anybody's been down there, but you're, we're happy to take them on a tour, aren't we?
Sure.
We've, we've built, or we've, we've put in an aeration basin of about 750,000 gallons. And we have lined it. We are ready for, to put the aeration system in which bubbles the, the sewage that, that comes in and treats it for, for processing anyway. We have to put the temporary in before we can shut down the oxidation ditch and clean it out and do what we need to do there. So, this is only for the temporary basin. It's not for the oxidation ditch. What we're putting it out, the scope is only for the temporary basin, to put the aeration system in there and to hook up the airlines to it. So, it's, it's one of the many puzzle pieces we have to put in to get this all ready to go.
Mr. Mayor?
None of them.
And this will serve as a, an emergency backup in the event?
It will. The way the permits were written, we are leaving it permanently installed. And we will, we will drain the, the, the basin down and let it fill back up with effluent in case we need to drain it again to fill it with sewage. And it also gives a, a plant 800, almost $800,000 more, more of a capacity. So, it's a pretty smart way of doing things. And, and we, we just completed the liner that, that's for the basin. We have a 70 by 70 pad poured in the bottom with a, with a drainage sump in it. So, we can pump it out at any time. And yeah, it's a big deal. So, give, give us a call. Frank or I call and we'll, we'll give you a tour and give you right in SS Jepson.
My favorite place to visit.
It's just a two-seater though.
So, yeah, it was his first day of work. We showed him the, the boat and it said SS Jepson.
I was so lucky.
So, he should have known what he was getting into that very first day. But anyway, that's what we're asking again is for a direction, a motion to go out to advertise for an IFB on this. And we're hoping, the, the secondary reason why we're doing this is we're hoping to attract local bidders as well because it's a smaller project and the whole thing.
So moved.
Second. We have motion second to move forward with this project for bid. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify. Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed. One more time, Jerry. Item C, discussion and consideration of ordinance 858 and resolution 1797 for adoption of a no-cut policy and procedures for cutting asphalt on Globe City streets. Shelley, can you read ordinance 855, 858 and resolution 1757?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Due to the nature of my business, I would like to recuse myself from this conversation.
You have that. Freddie will recuse himself from this talk.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 858, an ordinance of the City of Globe, Arizona amending the Globe City Code by amending chapter nine by adding a new section 9-10-5 entitled Pavement Cut Policy thereto, adopting such ordinance by reference, repealing any and all other ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict therewith. Resolution number 1757, a resol, a resolution of the Mayor and Council of the City of Globe, Arizona declaring a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk and amending chapter nine by adding a new section 9-10-5 entitled Pavement Cut Policy for purposes of adoption by reference. Does council please with that reading?
Yes.
Yes, sure.
Mr. Mayor, members of council. So, let me start by saying, we've added well over 1.5 million dollars worth of asphalt to the streets this year. We intend to do that close to that next year. In order to complete the, the six-year program that, that you guys wanted me to do, I have to keep doing that. It is kind of senseless for us to put this much money into our infrastructure. And then because of utility upgrades, have, have that infrastructure cut up. And so, this no-cut policy is very common amongst communities. We, my staff looked at probably 10 community no-cut policies within the state of Arizona and probably, probably as many outside, correct, in different parts of the country. What, what you see before you is probably 90% of it is a Phoenix no-cut policy. And, and we've kind of adopted that to fit our situation. And then also, in the, in the back part of this policy is the permit that we would issue to the utilities or to the individuals who would want to cut our pavement. And it has a fee structure in it that would, that they would have to purchase a permit. And then on top of that. and then on top of that have a way of healing the asphalt. And in most cases, it's a, it's a mill and fill twenty-five feet each side of the cut all the way across the pavement. So, it's, it's not an inexpensive way of doing that, but remember our taxpayers paid for that asphalt out there. So, I, I believe it's the right thing to do and it's, as your city engineer, I believe it's my duty to bring it before you and say this needs to be done immediately. So, I, I believe that because of the length of this, council should take a good look at it and bring it back to another meeting. And Paul has even suggested the utilities may get involved in it. They, because it's gonna be expensive for them. But it's still, I stand firm by saying that, that even though it's an expense that a utility would have, they need to budget that into their repairs. And, and we don't need to keep eating the brunt of that, so that's my opinion.
So, I, so I totally agree with that because it is a cost of doing business, whether it's for the utility company or for the city. We, we have to use our dollars that could be spent elsewhere to, to fix their mess. I disagree with that. And I read every single page of all of this. I read every word and what I really, really liked was under number eleven, street restoration. Item E says, "All street cuts shall be covered by a two-year warranty period commencing upon final inspection and acceptance by the city." So, you know, where I live in the hood, there's a really lot of shoddy asphalt work that has been done by some of these companies and I walk those streets every day. Some, some of the, the repairs are this much lower than the rest of our streets. It's really a hazard, it's a public safety hazard and it's not okay to let them not put it up to the standard that it was installed in. So, I think this is a very well-written policy.
Our, our city code does not give us any teeth to enforcing some of these road cuts. It does not tell us what to put back other than, than we have adopted mag standards. So, my thought on, on nine, ten, five is, is that we adopt something that says you have to put back this as a minimum. And, and, and that means a patch that would actually be deeper than what we're going to mill and fill. So, a four-inch patch and then we mill the top two inches off and, and put it back. It's the only way to heal the pavement, right? It also talks about the tack and so forth. I mean, how many of these patches have, now, I have to admit, the gas company really come in and did a nice job on some of these and, and they did a tack around the outside of their patches and so forth. And, and that's what it needs, you have to heal the new asphalt with the old asphalt in some way and that's what you use the tack coats for. And, you know, in, in another life, I was kind of an asphalt expert, so this is my recommendation to the city on, on how to take care of your infrastructure. I, I, like I, Paul and I talked about, it's something that is very impactful for the utility companies. So, it's something that the council needs to consider over the next couple of weeks. So, and I'd be glad to ask, answer any questions either tonight or in the future, within the next couple of weeks to, to ease your mind on what should be done.
In addition to tack, it also specifies that all asphalt patches shall be made with hot mixed asphalt. That's a biggie.
Yeah.
That, that's imperative.
So, I don't know.
The success of our streets.
I don't know whether you know what a microseal is, but a microseal, a microseal is, this, this actually, our older streets would, it would require a microseal on them as well. So, you couldn't just come in and cut up our old streets either, you'd have to put a microseal on them. So, and, and what that does is it heals everything together. And it gives the city a chance to, to afford to have the milling fills in place later on.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
When you did this construction, this new pavement, this asphalt that you laid down, you coordinated so well with all of the utilities to come in and, and upgrade their infrastructure before you put it down. So, if next year and the years going forward, when you coordinate with them, are we going to require them to pay this, this permitting fee as well?
So, if we are asphalting in an area, what's usually done within the city, the utilities will come in and make their cuts because we're gonna be doing that already. And we don't charge them extra, it's a coordination, you're right, between them. You know, it was done very well this year because, you know, I, I might have said a long time ago that we were gonna do this cut policy. So, a lot of the companies come out and, and, and did their utilities upfront. You know, and also remember a lot of the work that we did, the utility companies was us. So, so the water, the sewer and all that was us. So, it was us, up to us to coordinate our efforts as well. So, you know, the other thing, as Councilman Leithen was talking about, when we have a new project, a lot of the companies will want to upgrade their work ahead of us. And, and that'll be a coordination. As Councilman Rios and I were talking earlier, you know, there, there might be projects that don't get, that gets pushed out because the, the budget's too much for them to afford the asphalt. But, you know, how much is our six-year program gonna be pushed out if we have to keep going back fixing streets all the time? So.
One more comment. Go ahead.
I got a comment too. Yesterday, Cottonwood was tore up again after they just did the street. They went in and dug up down in Cottonwood Endeavour, right on that intersection. And I heard Southwest Gas hit a sewer line. So, now.
Yeah, there's a debate on.
After that beautiful street was done, now we got a patch of garbage again.
Yeah, and that, and that street was just.
Nobody actually told anybody either. That's a one-way section where we were all blocked in for an entire day.
So, if, if you notice within, within the ordinance, it now requires a permit. The permit is in here, what we, what we proposed to council for a permit, it would require that, it even asks the questions, have you submitted a traffic control plan? Has your street closure been publicized? You know, those type of things should be done, but we have nothing in place within our ordinance to make sure that it gets done. We work within our franchise agreements. The, the utility companies are usually very good at trying, but in all, in some cases, they, they don't. This was done by a private contractor for the homeowner and it was later found that it was the, the gas company. So, so they started it, in fact, I had a long discussion with them today at City Hall about the traffic control plans that they need to, to do upfront before they make street cuts. That's gonna be patched, that street's gonna be patched, it's not gonna be left stone. It'll be patched, but we won't have the additional microseal or anything on it that would heal that whole street area. Hopefully, this time next year, we'll have that in place and, and we'll be able to say, no, you, you have to do this too. And, and the other thing within the ordinance too is if you don't do it, then the city will do it and charge you.
So, that was a private company that came out and?
It was. The homeowner offered, hired the contractor to come up. They cut the road trying to fix a sewer line. The first John and I knew about it, we ran out and, and the road was already cut out, so.
So, they did it without permission?
Well.
That's ridiculous.
Yeah, so that's what we're trying to avoid. We talked about liability and so forth, that's, that's the kind of liability that we're trying to avoid. That could have been really, really bad. John went up and, John left already? Yeah. Anyway, he, he went up and talked to all the property owners and made a point. There was one other gentleman who was disabled in that area and we made sure he got in and out. It's what we do well, it's not necessarily what all contractors do well.
Aren't licensed contractors supposed to get a permit to, to, to do that, aren't they aware of that?
Evidently not all of them.
Was this guy licensed?
Yes. So, so a lot, a lot of it, a lot of it can be under the umbrella of emergency repairs. And, and that has a lot more leeway than other things, but even under this, they would have to come back and do a microseal or whatever on it, on emergency repairs. So, this gives us more teeth. So, that's, it's something to consider, but it's something, as Paul and I said, we need to read over and question and if there's verbiage that you would like changed. You know, Freddie and I talked about earlier, about new connections. You know, there is an exception in here, if you read the policy real well, for a two-square-foot exception to that. That gives you an ability to hook up a meter or whatever onto a property. So, you know, if there's something else that the council would like to see, it'd be, now's the time to put it in this policy, so.
Jerry, I do like the suggestion that you sit down with these utility companies and have a discussion with them at least too on this no cut policy so they fully understand it.
So, I can have that discussion with them, I don't know that, that they'll like it, but, but it, it, you know, if, if you take a cutter, I'm just giving you, for instance, if you take a cut across the road and you put a, just say a gas line, because we have a lot of gas lines in, and you put a gas line in, on a new road, the permit will probably cost you about eight hundred dollars and then the asphalt will be somewhere around the four thousand dollar range to fix it. So, it's not a cheap way of doing it. But if we have to come back in and do it ourselves, that's four thousand or five thousand dollars that I gotta take out of the city coffers and not spend on a road that needs it. So, you know, that's, that's, that's the point I keep trying to make. I can discuss it with the utility companies, I can, one of the gentlemen that I had at my last utility meeting said, "Well, let's do it the way we do in Phoenix." Guess what, this is the way you do it in Phoenix. And I called them to see if there was any exceptions after that meeting and they said, "No, no, no," they're always trying to get by with that, so.
Jerry, is the city have to comply with this no cut policy too? If we get a break in the line, we'll have to do the same thing then, right?
Well, it's, it's not really the same way. I mean, because we do, it is our budget, no matter which way we do it, whether we, what we would do probably is do the trench cuts in an area, then figure out a multiple job to, to take all these in, where the utility companies would not have the ability to do that. We wouldn't let them sit for a year or two before we fix them all. And we would have the ability to do that. I mean, it's our permit, we're gonna do it to our advantage, but we're not gonna cut a road up without fixing it either. And, yeah, I just think that we need to use our dollar wisely. And where this, this policy is, to answer your question, I guess, is not geared towards us, but we would not want our roads to be destroyed by us either.
I have one more question, Jerry, and I'm done. Just the, and because Steve's in the audience too. The metal plates that are on the highway, is that, is under a no cut policy? And how are those gonna be replaced?
So, the no, the no cut policy does not include state highways. I do not know how they got the state to approve those. If you remember right, I had a hell of a time getting lane closures approved.
To get the water line in.
So, I don't know how they got those plates approved out there, but they said they did. But they, and remember, the, the plates are for pits. That's where they bore at. You know, the line they're putting in might be five hundred feet long but they gotta have a hole somewhere and somewhere for it to come out. So, they're minimizing as much as they possibly can, but they're still disruptive in, in lane closures. I asked ADOT the same question and, and they kind of went like that, they submitted the permit and they got it, so.
But we anticipate that to be paved though, right? Those aren't permanent and they're those plates, are they?
Oh, no, no. The, the plates will be removed once they get all their final connections and, and then it'll be patched by ADOT standards. So, and I guarantee you that ADOT permit will be all over those to make sure they're patched right. But, yeah. And we still have, we still have plates down everywhere too. And, you know, this, this, it, it's a safe way to get traffic around an area without having to fix it right on the spot. You can come back after everything, all the repairs are made.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the, the two, two important points. You know, we, we have relationships, we have positive relationships with our utilities and we want to maintain those. We will, and I will participate also with Jerry in reaching out to the utilities and making sure they understand that we're, we're trying to preserve our investment. And, and that way, had phone conversation with Representative Southwest Gas, who, they've been very good about, you know, getting a lot of work done before knowing our schedule. And the more they do that, the less they'll, they'll be impacted by this. But had a conversation, we talked about doing some tweaks and, and they had some suggestions. And so, we're all ears, we're happy to, to hear if there's some way that, that we can, you know, you know, work together to, to find a way to lessen the impact on, you know, maintain our quality but lessen the impact. We're, we're happy to sit down and listen with them and with all the utilities, so we'll do that. The, the other thing though, but the judge of whether this is a good policy or not, I think is to compare it to the standards of what other communities demand. You know, if our no cut policy is, is subpar, I think bringing up to the, the best practice, you know, and what other communities demand, I think this, I, I don't think, I don't see how utilities can, you know, can see that we're doing anything wrong if we're just asking what other, you know, organizations, other cities and towns ask of them also. I think we, we deserve as, as much of, you know, we, we have the, deserve another same type of respect and, and the ability to, to have good quality roads and, and not have them, you know, torn up afterwards inadvertently, you know, as any other community. So, we'll work through that and, and we will complete those conversations before we come back with this, with this item. So, this may not come back in two weeks, it may take a little bit longer, but it, but let us, you know, I, I want to have Jerry do some research and, and show the, that we're on par with other organizations, other cities and towns and then be able to report back the conversations we have with the utilities. One of which the utilities we're talking to will be Arizona Water and, and that is why Councilman Rios had to recuse himself.
I, I have those policies for about twenty organizations and I can provide those to council, so.
So, we, we know that their, their best practice is common, just want to show.
And we're not upgrading our policy because we don't have one.
Okay, well, that's.
So, yeah, so we, and then, and then the other thing is all of the, the, in my utility meeting, every single utility offered to help me write this.
Yes.
I had a host of volunteers.
Charlie, you had a comment?
I do, so here's what we, this board that is, and staff that is going to say yea or nay to this policy needs to remember and keep in mind that utility companies are for profit. The city is not, I'm sorry. We, the buck stops right here, who, who's gonna pay the bill? That's, that's the bottom line at the end of the day, who's gonna pay the bill? So, I want more, way more miles of asphalt in, in this whole city. We can't be paying for the utilities' asphalt, they're gonna have to pay for their own.
Any other comments, questions? Do we have a motion to move this forward to the next convenient meeting?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I would ask for a motion to move this forward to such time that council, or that staff may report back on their, their meetings with the utility companies.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify. Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion pass. Action items. Approve the total amount bed tax funds received and dispersed for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen.
Good evening, Mayor and council. At the August twenty-seventh council meeting, I brought this before you for the first time to advise you that we had actually collected fifteen thousand seventy-two dollars and two cents more in bed tax funds than we had budgeted for in fiscal year two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget. So, tonight, I'm just looking for direction to go ahead and pass that additional fifteen thousand on to the bed tax organizations. Any questions?
A motion?
A motion?
Good problem you have.
What a problem.
Good problem.
I'd move to move that forward.
There'll be approval. It's an action item.
Okay, yeah, I move to approve.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify. Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed. Thank you, Jeannie. Oh, you're again.
I'm still here.
Consideration for final approval amendment number two to contract number 10, no, I'm sorry, number 019-0248, with the Penile Gila Council for Senior Citizens to extend the term of the contract from July 1st, 2019, to June 30th, 2020.
And again, at our last council meeting, I brought this before you for the first read. It's our annual amendment to renew our four-year contract with Penile Gila Council for Senior Citizens to, they provide funding and facilitate our running of our Active Adult Center.
And this has to be renewed annually, anyway.
It does. Last year was the first of the new four-year contract period. We had responded successfully to an RFP from them, and this is our second year of the four-year.
A motion to approve it?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second for approval. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeannie. Item C, consideration of resolution number 1796, support ratification for the Equal Rights Amendment, ERA by the Arizona Legislature. Shelley, can you read resolution number 1796, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 1796, a resolution of the mayor and council of the City of Globe expressing support for the ratification of the Equal Rights Amendment, ERA by the Arizona Legislature in 2019. Is council pleased with the reading?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, members of council, two weeks ago, we brought this forward initial, and we had speakers and presenters on this. We did get some supplemental material. Representative Cook, I think, provided some material that's in the packet, and response from Senator Quezner that was, that we included in there. And so it is, I don't think we have any speaker cards, and I don't see anybody in the audience who's looking to speak on this, and so it's council's pleasure on taking final action on this.
I just, I want to thank Shelley for putting those comparison charts together. You know, we did hear the information from Representative Cook, but we also got the rebuttal from Senator Cosala, and that was good. But it depends what party you listen to and which way you want to go. But I think at our level, it's really not, you know, if we ratify, it's going to be in the legislature, let them argue it out and figure out what they want to do with it.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no other coming or question, I move to approve resolution 1796.
Second.
A motion and a second for approval for the ERA. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed. Go to late agenda items, have any? None? Second call to the public? I have no cards. Scheduling of meetings?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I did want to use this opportunity to talk about two things. Number one, we did have the early special e-session this morning, or this morning, sorry.
Well, it kind of was for you, right?
No, it's at 5:15 to 5:45 here. Did that work for council? I know that some of you have some scheduling conflicts and things like that. I think it was a short issue. I think we can, we can knock it off in a half an hour and save the extent at the end. I think, I think some things are just, are going to take more time, and we've already had that discussion. But I think if staff believes that a half an hour e-session would suffice, that we agendize it with a, an early e-session, what is, where is council at on this?
I think it worked out.
Ready?
For me personally, coming in at 5:00 is really going to put a strain on my workday. Just, I'm just saying that, you know, because of the travel that I do and the commitments that I have with my job, to be able to break away right at 5:00 is going to be challenging.
See, I would, I'm in that same boat. And also, my concern, like, tonight, we were, we couldn't make any decision. We were way too rushed. We didn't have enough time to really discuss the issue. My other concern is if, so it doesn't really work for my life to, one day, one time, one meeting, maybe 5:15 is okay, but then three meetings down the road, we're not doing it at 5:15, we're going to do it after the meeting. That's hard to plan. When, you know, when you, when you have your work going on, too, if it was always the same, that might be a little easier, but there's days I won't be able to get here at 5:00.
Randall?
I'm okay with either method. It works for me. But the one thing I would say is that there have been a couple times that we got to our e-sessions late, and we're not able to include our legal counsel because it was too late. So I, if we are going to have e-sessions later in the evening, we probably need to, like, set a time to get to e-session and then continue the meeting after or something, because we really should have legal counsel present when we're discussing...
Well, and just...
Stop the regular meeting.
Just for the record, we haven't, we haven't had e-session items without counsel inappropriately, just...
Not, you know, I didn't say inappropriately, but I'm just saying it'd be better to have them. And there's been a couple times we went, continued e-session without our attorney present on the phone, so...
Right, but those are, for land items, we don't have to have the attorney present, so we're able to do that, is how that was agendized. And there was, I think, a time where we had to cancel the e-session because we were too late. And, but to your direct point, the mayor has been very adamant that we try to manage the agenda, keep the presentation short, you know, control the time on some of this, and so we're not, you know, hitting e-session at 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock at night. I think that, I think, no matter what we do, I think that is something we want to try to avoid. It's, so, I mean, we're about to hit e-session at 8:30. That's not, not too bad. We've always looked for a three-hour meeting is about, I think, the limit.
Mike, you're coming?
The time's fine. For me, it's rushed. I have to take off and get up and back, but alls we did was adjust it. We're four hours into it.
Well, and I, so, so I...
And we still have to go back.
Yeah.
We're not done.
Right, and we had scheduled one, when we scheduled that originally, we had one item on there, and then at the very end, we had to add that second item because it was timely nature.
How long does that happen? There's three or four items on e-session. We can't do that in 45 minutes.
Right, so, so I...
I'm fine with it, but we're still getting out at 9:00, 9:30.
Yeah, and we came at 5:15. So, the...
I'd be in favor of what Fernando had proposed as far as stopping the meeting, maybe, and waiting session coming back.
You've got a long agenda.
Yeah, okay. And the, no, and so I think the direction of council definitely, we won't, on a regular basis, plan an early e-session unless we get direction, or it seems like it really is going to fit a special bill, but it'll be the, it won't be the norm. It'll be the exception. And the other thing is, what we've already tried to do is trying to get the meetings, you know, as short as possible, at least get them trimmed down as best we can, and to expedite that and make sure that we're, stay on task and go through that, and then adjusting the items, so...
So maybe we just need to think about if there's a, I don't want to commit to every single Tuesday night for the rest of my life because there's other, like, you know, I have downtown on Tuesdays and other things to do, but maybe when we have a really long agenda, we do say, okay, we can only do half of it this Tuesday. We're going to have to go to next Tuesday. We don't have to do that every time. What's everybody think about that?
Maybe during our budget meetings, definitely.
Yeah, the, and there is a, there's an efficiency for us to, each meeting that staff has to set up and agendize and get, and get set up is, you know, it takes staff's time away from other things. I think that, I think trying to shorten the individual agenda items rather than multiplying the meeting times, I'd rather see us do, try to do a better job and not lose hope on getting, you know, getting out of here on time rather than going to weekly meetings. I think weekly meetings would be burdensome and hard on staff and hard on council, too. But it's council's decision.
I think some of our meetings, or a lot of our meetings go long, but there's some information that we need to gather, and I think it's important. I know we can't get rushed into decisions, and, but I think if we can try and manage it and, you know, a little better and try and get them a little shorter, but, you know, the thing is, we still got to get the information out.
Well, and, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so one of the things that you may or may not have seen, I know, I know Councilman Rios saw this, at the, at the league meeting, where it's a large meeting, they have flags that they raise when it's time to call the question and to show that everybody's kind of like, let's get this moving, or anything like that. I don't know if that's something we want to do here in a public meeting, but, you know, with everybody waving the flag, trying to say, let's get to the vote, but I think what...
Hey, let's get a hammer.
So, we even, just in case, we made up some flags, but we didn't bring them out. So, but I do believe that in Robert Rules of Order, there is a call for the question, and I don't, I don't think anybody wants to go, well, let's just call the question. It's kind of brutal, but, but I think, Mayor, you can guide that by saying, you know, I think we're getting, we're getting long. We may want to, you know, believe that in two minutes, if we haven't resolved this, we call the question, and kind of get that two-minute warning. If that's a strategy, this is totally mayor and council's call, and, you know, it's hard to say when there's an item, when we don't have useful conversation. I think, you know, there's questions, there's useful conversation, but it's up to council to decide if, if you think that we should vote. Every council member has Robert's Rules of Order and can say, you know, I'd like to call the question and end the discussion and vote.
I agree completely. I clocked it tonight.
Yeah.
Three line items take 75 minutes on special presentations alone.
Mm-hmm.
So, 40 minutes on one.
Yeah.
That is volunteerism.
Right. Well, and I believe there are a lot of, a lot of questions about that. I mean, if you, at any point, you want to ask me to...
There are a lot of questions. I don't think I can read.
And if there's, and anytime you want to just halt the presentation and just say, you know, we're, we've heard enough, I mean, I don't know. Are we, do you think we're giving too much information, or...
I'm just telling you, you asked a question.
Yeah, okay, because...
And we'll leave it at that.
Okay, because, yeah, but, and, and two, and just, just also for the record, two of these presentations were requested by council that were, that went this long, so these are ones that were requested, so, anyway.
Go ahead, throw me under the bus.
No.
No, you can.
No, no.
I was the one.
No, one of them was Freddie.
Oh, okay. I got, you told me, you told me the other day, both of these darn things are right, your request, you said that.
No, we...
Well, it's your fault.
No, that's the one we, and we took that one off.
Oh, you took mine off.
Yeah, well, we worked it out. No, and, okay, so, I'm sorry, just restore order. We, there was, there was a requested conversation, requested the leash, and we worked it out to where we could do it, I think, and satisfy your need without having to bring it here. So we did trim down one.
Do that.
I'm pulling the dead horse flag, and we're going to the next item.
Okay.
We'll bring yours up, and we'll bring up special events.
Well, we were, we were thinking about getting little globe flags, actually, so...
Future agenda items.
So would any council members like to add any future agenda items?
No.
Okay.
Let's go for a fourth special event.
Don't worry, it's coming back.
We still have another e-session then, tonight.
It's council's, I would recommend, I would like to, yes, there's one on the table, but you can choose to go to it or not to, but it is somewhat of a timely thing, and so I'd say we take a stab at it.
Do we have a motion to go into e-session?
Motion made.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into e-session. All those in favor signify.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Thank you.
Motion passed. Thank you for attending.
And just so you know...
We did get it under three hours.
All our prospects are like...
And there will be no items coming back.